All right, we will call to order tonight's city council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Keldor?
Here.
Councilmember Giroux?
Here.
Councilmember Boils?
Here.
Mayor Protem Baldino?
Here.
And Mayor Pimentel?
Here, thank you very much. We will start with an invocation from Pastor Javier Bueno. Pastor Bueno, are you here? And if we all remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Boils.
Good evening. My name is Javier Bueno. I pastor RTA Church. We are currently holding worship service here at El Segundo High School. It's my honor to be able to pray for City Council tonight. Let's pray. Lord, I pray for our mayor, City Council members, and all personnel who lead and work in City Departments. Grant them your protection, wisdom, and creativity as they lead the city forward. Guide them with clarity to address challenges. May their leadership be marked by integrity, unity, and a heart to serve the people of El Segundo. Bless this city with peace, progress, and prosperity, and may your favor rest upon all the residents. Amen.
Thank you very much Pastor Bueno and Councilmember Boils. Madam Clerk, we do not have any special presentations this evening. So we will move directly, oh, do you have one snuck in?
Yeah.
No, I didn't think. So we'll move directly to public communication. Do we have any cards already?
We do, we have two of them.
We have two?
I would like to invite Tessa Rasmussen.
Very well, each speaker will have four minutes, unless it's an agendized item, we'll do five.
Hi, good evening. My name's Tessie Rasmussen. I live at 605 Sheldon here in El Segundo. I wanted to bring before the council, as I'm sure you're aware, we're about 1,200 days out from the Olympics, and we're in grounds zero, I think, for pretty much everything that's going to be happening. So I'd really like to see the city put together some sort of organizing committee between the businesses and the city to get the residents involved, get the businesses involved, and see if we can just be proactive rather than reactive to the hundreds of thousands of people that are going to be descending on the city of LA in 2028. And we have FIFA coming in 2026, which is also going to be quite busy. So I just wanted to bring, put that out there, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen.
Eric Behor?
Hi, my name is Eric Behor. I live at 941 Loma Vista Street. I've been a resident of El Segundo for about 11 years. I come before you today to discuss a traffic safety request that was submitted in August of 2024. I had previously been submitted a request in 2022 as well for the installation of a stop sign at the intersection of Loma Vista Street and Acacia Street in the northwest part of town. There's currently no stop sign for three blocks on the northwest, or north-south traffic on Loma Vista Street. The request was previously rejected. However, you know, it did go around, and we have the support of nearly 50 neighbors of the park in the area around, who all believe that the stop sign is necessary to ensure the safety of people that live in the neighborhood. There's a high level of traffic due to Acacia Park being one of the most popular parks in town, and we see a very high, an increased use of high-speed e-bikes in the neighborhood, and very frequent close calls at that intersection due to people either driving too fast or distracted driving. So just wanted to bring this up for reconsideration amongst the council for installation of stops on.
Thank you, Mr. Behor.
Thank you very much.
If you'd like, you may leave that, your petition with the clerk. Any further public comments? Very well, City Manager, any responses?
Yes, Mayor, before the responsive, I'd also like to just share during public communication that I did receive an email from a resident inquiring about the Hilltop Park plans, design, and so forth and so on. So she submitted a long statement, but I replied to her that we are still in the process of the planning stages, and that I would make sure that she gets noticed of all the, any upcoming meetings that are taking place. So I just wanted to share that with you. In addition, Ms. Rasmussen on the Olympics pre-planning, absolutely. We, the economic development staff has been fully engaged in pre-planning a number of things that they're working with the business community on, with the chamber, and I'd be happy to share those with you if you can leave me your phone number or just reach out to the City Manager's office, and I'll put you in contact with them. And then, Mr. Behor, I will take your, oh, all right, well, I will take his petition that was signed and work, I'll address that to the Public Works Department for potential reconsideration.
Any council comments?
Mr. George, just so we're clear, there is a staff group that responds to and evaluates these requests for stop signs, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, just so everyone knows, there is a process where people can submit, and it's evaluated by the police and Public Works and all that.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I would encourage, it's likely, or it's probably best in that response to include why it was warranted or unwarranted in the past, and how that decision is made. You know, clearly, there is, there is a degree of discretion on it, but there is a process by which we go. And similarly, I know there's, there's broad, I speak outside for, for, I've heard broad interest in coordination on special events. So if we do have a staff process on that, that might be worth reading us into to see what we can do with that.
Okay.
All right, we are flying along. Proceed with motions. Entertain a motion to read all ordinance and resolutions on the agenda by title only. So moved.
Baldino, seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Very well, the motion passes. Onto consent. Do we have any polls?
I'd like to poll number eight, please.
Are there any other polls? Very well, I will take a motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and nine. So moved.
Baldino, seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Item eight, over to you, Mayor Protem.
Thanks, Chief. So this is an agreement for sharing fiber services with the City of Los Angeles Fire Department, and my, my concern, or really my question, is we are giving fire, but also medical services to a large portion of the beach at Mar Vista. And will the request from LA County come to us for combating fires? Or are we going to be burdened with Los Angeles homeless problem on the beach? Because it gets very intense as you go north. And so reading through this, it wasn't clear to me, you know, what the parameters or scope of this shared service would be.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The intent of this automatic aid agreement is to reduce the response time. Under the California Mutual Aid Agreement, it's a request process that goes through dispatch centers, and it takes time to get those resources near us or to us. To your question, this is really for the intent of addressing emergency situations. So our agreement is, and what all of the area chiefs around, is looking at the closest resource and doing border drop. And historically, LA City has so many more resources than we do, as you know, and they go in force, and they rarely really need us. So from a practical perspective, going to the beach, we do, and we have responded. And once we get there, they have canceled us numerous times, if they get there first. So in my analysis, and analysis of our chief officers, this is not a burden on the city. It's actually an incredible benefit.
Okay. All right, thank you, Chief, that answers my question.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
With that, unless you, any other?
Any other council comments, questions, concerns?
Then I'll go ahead and move approval of item number eight, the Automatic Aid and Exchange Service Agreement between El Segundo Fire Department and the City of Los Angeles Fire Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, five oh. Onto item 10, our public hearing. This is the time and place heretofore fixed for a public hearing for the resolution approving the use of fiscal year 2425 Community Development Block Grants for the installation of ADA-compliant curb ramps. City Clerk, was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Proper notice was given.
Have we received any public communication? Written communication, excuse me?
No, we have not.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Mr. George will make this presentation.
Our Community Development Director, Michael Allen, will make the presentation.
Director Allen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Daryl. Members of the council, Mayor, good evening. Mayor Protem, and Happy New Year. That's our first official presentation of the New Year's for us here. Before you tonight is the consideration of the fiscal year 2425 Community Development Block Grant Funding revenues or funding source that we receive on an annual basis, which is funneled through the county, received from the feds. Traditionally, the city has used those funds to, to support the, the sort of systematic incremental improvement of ADA ramps throughout the city, the sidewalk ramps that lead to, to crosswalks or legal crossings. There's been times where the city has used that funding for other community purposes, rehabilitation of community restrooms, facilities like that for ADA improvements. But the, the amount of funding that we receive is somewhat limited. It's about $60,000 per year, so that funding can only go so far. So we currently don't have any major projects in the pipeline that this funding could be used for in this current fiscal year. So we're, we're coming before you to, to ask to allocate the, the carryover funds from the outstanding balance from a previous CDBG cycle of about $33,000, and couple that with about a $61,000 allocation for the current fiscal year, for a total of about $94,000 for this current cycle. And then we will likely see an additional encumbrance or additional allocation in the new fiscal year, which will come back to council and, and add that to, to this pot to continue the effort of upgrading and improving crosswalks or the sidewalks leading into crosswalks with ADA curb ramps going into those crosswalks. There's a, a map exhibit in the staff report on the, I would think, the third page to show you sort of spatially where those improvements are. There's not a whole lot to these projects, they're pretty straightforward. The timing, I believe, we're looking at getting started this summer. If it was approved now, we'd have to file the paperwork with the county so that we could go out to bid and contract out the, the projects that we could get started with this summer. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. That's about it.
Any questions on the presentation? Can I ask just one? Is there a measure of how close we are to being done with the curb cuts? Are there many left to be done?
It's, yeah, so what happens is the, the ADA law and the standards for the curb cuts and ADA crossings, or at least ramps going into crosswalks, changes every so many years. And so perpetually, we can continue to use this funding to upgrade curb ramps until we have a viable project. I can come back with that actual number of how many we have improved.
No, I was just curious, because I know we do this every year, and you would think that you're almost running out of curbs to cut, but perhaps the curb cut lobby is stronger than, than I thought.
It's a good business.
Yeah, it's a good business to be in. I'm an idiot, I should have been in the curb cut business. All right, well, that's it, those are my only questions. Are there any public comments? The public hearing is now open for public input? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Baldino, seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh, the motion is closed. Council discussion. Wouldn't want to opine on curb cuts further? Very well, City Attorney, would you read the resolution by title only?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution approving the Community Development Block Grant Program for 2024, 2025 is available for a vote?
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
So, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Five oh, we are resolved to take on curb cuts. All right, moving to item 11, revisions to the City Job Classification Specifications for the Public Works Inspector and Engineering Technician and Accompanying Resolution. Director Reddick, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item tonight is review of two job specs that work in the Public Works Department. They're both vacant positions. They have been vacant by some time. They are represented by the City Employees Association, which is the, associated with the National Organization of ASME. So the Public Works Inspector, this position performs inspections of private projects in the public right of way. This position was last occupied in 2017. This position, the duties of this position were being performed by the prior incumbent of the Engineering Technician, which is also in Public Works. They have a little bit of crossover in terms of inspections. So this Public Works Inspector has been vacant since 2017. The other classification we're going to talk about tonight is Engineering Technician. This one has been vacant since the person vacated the position in October of 2022. During this time, the Public Works Department has been relying on on-call contracts to do work as needed for the inspection processes. So with the Public Works Inspector, the classifications updates include, we've been standardizing format, including, you know, specific language regarding, you know, appearing for work on time, accepting constructive criticism, and also language about the driver's license, the disaster service worker language. We also have a statement on all of our job descriptions now with the city's commitment to be an equal opportunity employer. The job spec requirements for the Public Works Inspector were a little bit confusing. They were either 18 months' experience inspecting construction projects, or five years of experience supervising public works projects. So that is proposed to be revised to just two years performing a variety of construction, inspection, or related experience. So this gives a little bit more flexibility, it's more clarity for the candidates who will be applying for this position. Education is the same, high school plus specialized training, and the exam plan remains the same, which is an oral interview. Salary placement for this position. I did do a salary survey for this of our comparable agencies, and this position was found to be significantly, significantly undermarket. It was 10 of 10. So considering the salary survey data, considering the city's established salary structure that we have, we already have in terms of, you know, which positions are like and which salaries they should be placed at, I'm recommending that this position be placed at the level of the current Engineering Technician salary. And so at the top of the salary range, that is an increase of 21.8%. But again, that doesn't mean that the person selected for the position would be getting that much, just it's the range. The second position for consideration this evening is the Engineering Technician. This is the entry-level classification into the engineering series. This position performs technical and paraprofessional work and engineering-related work. They also do a little bit of inspections of public works facilities. So this position right now, as written, requires two years of experience and an AA degree, which is a total of four years of preparation. We are proposing to revise that to internship-desired with a four-year bachelor's degree. So still remaining a total of four years' level of preparation, also indicating that an engineering training certificate is desirable. With, with that change, what we're doing here is we can attract brand-new college grads to the position, and the second position in the engineering classification series also requires a bachelor's degree. So we're setting them up for success to move through the, the city's series. The exam plan for this one remains the same, it's an oral interview. The salary placement for this one, I'm recommending this be placed at the same level of the Building Inspector One, which is similar in terms of four years of preparation. That means at the top step of the salary range, that was about a 5% increase. These job descriptions, under the MMBA, you are required to meet and confer on terms and conditions of employment, which includes job descriptions. So I did meet and confer with the CA, and they were very responsive, and they agreed to the changes made and the salaries on January 9th. It was a very quick turnaround. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Council discussion.
Just to be clear, these are vacant positions, so even though you're asking for kind of a step up in the range, there's going to be no budgetary impact because the money's already there.
For this fiscal year, there is no budgetary impact. They have been vacant for the duration of the fiscal year. We will, if approved, we intend to open a recruitment like this week and get the ball rolling on these so that they can get some help and stop relying on on-call contracts. The total full-year fiscal impact, if we were to hire someone at the top of the range, total would be $29,280, which is 23 for the Public Works Inspector, and $6,000 for the Engineering Tech. But for this fiscal year, there's no fiscal impact because positions haven't been filled. We don't know how long it'll take us to fill them, so it depends on what step the person is placed in the range.
And that may be offset by contractual savings, because we're doing the labor now, we're paying for it, we're just not paying a fully, fully burdened rate?
Correct, yes.
Further questions, comments?
No, I do enjoy watching the red lines of the old version to the new version, and, and some of the, I would say, explicit things you have to put in, like showing up to work. Thank you for, for finding these jobs and kind of updating them so we can get the best and the brightest people here, so I appreciate it.
The plan is to bring you back more throughout the year. We, we have a lot of updates that we need to work on, but these are most critical because they are relying on contracts to perform the work.
Great. And in an era where we're looking at upwards of 40 to 60 million dollars of Public Works projects, I think it's probably money well spent. We have to take these one at a time, I believe. So I will entertain a motion to approve the revised Public Works Inspector Classification and specification and accompanying exam plan?
Baldino, so moves.
Pimentel, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very well, I'll take a motion to approve the revised Engineering Technician Classification and specification and accompanying exam plan?
Boils, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to adopt a resolution modifying the basic salary range for the Public Works Inspector and Engineering Technician?
So moved.
Keldor, second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five oh, very well. Thank you, Director Reddick. Item 12, City of El Segundo Brand Guidelines and Ordinance Amending the El Segundo Municipal Code, Chapter 1 to 3, to update the city logo and associated use regulations and penalties for violation. Is the deputy city manager here?
Yes.
There we go.
Barbara Voss, the deputy city manager, will do this item.
Good evening, Mayor Pimentel, members of council. This evening, I'd like to present to you a document, a brand guidelines document for the City of El Segundo that was developed by the Communications Division. And I'd also like to introduce Chris that was developed by the Communications Division, and I'd also like to introduce Kristin Burgevan, who will be speaking and walking us through the brand guidelines, and she is our communications consultant, and has been with us since the, gosh, 2018, I think, in the, um, development of our website and even before that. So back in September of 2023, uh, we brought you a two-year communications plan as part of the Communications Division. This is our third revision of the communications plan, and within that communications plan, we had 10 points that we planned to achieve, uh, during the time we were implementing the plan. Number five, maintain and enhance consistent brand identity. As you may have seen or noticed, we have a lot of brand identities. There's a lot of iterations of things, a lot of different fonts, a lot of different colors. So we've been working really hard to try to rein it in and have some consistency while still maintaining the unique identities of some of the departments. With that, um, let me go here. So the brand guidelines includes city seal and logo treatment, and this evening, we're asking an amendment to the municipal code to, um, adopt an official logo, uh, that's already being used on our websites that you've probably noticed, and we've started to use it in other applications, and we just want to formally add it to the municipal code. Use of the city seal, obviously, that's not changing. City seal is what it is. But there is some confusion about when do we use the seal, when do we use the logo, so we wanted to clarify that. We go into variations and iterations. Sometimes a certain department will want, oh, City of El Segundo, but I want it to say X department name. Um, I want it to look a little different for my department, to kind of build teamwork and camaraderie within their department. So we have variations for that. Typography, what font are we supposed to use? What size is the font supposed to be when I'm writing a letter, when I'm writing an email? Go through all of that. Things that seem very detailed and nitpicky really do end up mattering when it comes to brand, um, identity and marketing. Color palette, uh, this is informed by our website, so, um, you'll see on different pages of the website, we have different colors. We have the overall city color, and then different divisions have color palettes as well. We have a Where Big Ideas Take Off color palette, Start Here, and a couple other things. Applications, how will we use all of these things and some examples, and then photography. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kristin Burgevan. Let me go back one. Uh, she's going to talk about who we're communicating to and then walk us very quickly through the brand guidelines. Kristin.
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton, council, city staff, and the community. Um, thank you for having me tonight. I wanted to start with this slide. Um, this is from the communications plan, and this just is an overview of our audiences and our channels. And I think this brings to life why a consistent brand identity and guidelines is so important. We're speaking to many people, and we want to have that clear, consistent one voice. I think we need to switch to the, to the PDF. I'm going to quickly walk us through the brand guidelines, um, very quickly, just so we can get a sense and share that with everyone. We start with our mission, our vision and mission, obviously, that's taken from the strategic plan, but we also include a brand character. And, um, I'll just quickly read it, but El Segundo is a friendly, laid-back beachside city with small town charm in the heart of one of America's major metros. El Segundo is home to a thriving business community, including global corporations across a range of diverse industries. So that just sets the tone of our guidelines and what we've put together. And then we go into, um, the city seal and its meaning. We often have new, um, staff joining the city, so we just want to go over the history of what the different components of the current city seal, um, mean. And then we lay out what they're used for, the seals specifically is used for. So letters, contracts, agendas, um, official things, um, letterhead memo. And that takes us to the Centennial logo. This is the, um, current official logo for the city that was adopted in 2017, obviously, to celebrate the centennial. And what we are requesting this evening is to please retire that logo, and we will, um, go into what the evolved logo looks like. Here we have a combination of the city seal with an overlay of City of El Segundo in an elegant stylized font, so it comes together. And then we can also have a simplified version of that as well, um, that is just City of El Segundo. That can be used across, um, you know, flyers, you know, wherever it fits best for whatever particular communication is needed at that time. And here you can see how it has been brought to life, um, with the, um, Economic Development logo and with the Tourism and Hospitality logo. So while all of the pieces evolved at different timelines and, um, the, the logo that we're requesting be adopted was created for the websites, you can see how the different parts are starting to fit together. Here we have El Segundo Connect that uses the Arial font, so there is a through line with that logo as well. And then here you can see, um, how it works with the different departments and El Segundo Media. And Rec Park's kind of the outlier, but, um, and then through the different department logos. Again, to Barbara's point, the clean, consistent, one voice look and feel to that. We also include in the brand guidelines some good examples of things not to do. Sometimes people learn from seeing the bad things, so just a few examples of those. And then just some specific technical guidelines as well, clear space, um, fonts, when to use certain fonts in email or letterhead. For, I won't go through all the different font types, but here it's clear where to use those. And then bringing together all the different color palettes that have been used throughout the websites. So the departments, when they're creating something, they have a go-to for reference if they want to use, um, you know, if it's fire and they want to use a red, if it's Start Here and we're putting together some collateral, um, here for Rec Park. So again, just having all that information at the fingertips on the internet so people know where to go and they have it, and it's not a hunt-and-find situation. And then going into some of the specific applications, email signatures, um, that's definitely a branding tool for the city, so it's, it's important that everybody has a clear, consistent, uh, email signature. And business cards, um, here you can see just the clean look, and we currently have one photo, um, that is in use, but we would like to, um, evolve that to having departments be able to choose some photos and/or having potentially, um, communities submit some photos that can be used. And then when departments need, they can just pick the photo they want for that particular, um, business card need. PowerPoint presentations. Uniforms, apparel, uh, swag items. El Segundo out in the community. And then, um, photography, always very important of how we show and bring to light the city. So we just have some examples here of vibrant, um, images that really capture what El Segundo is about. That's it. Any questions?
Council questions?
Well, I'm just curious, so can you go to the swag one, the logo apparel?
Oh, one more, the other way. That one?
You can go to the previous that has some, yeah, I just, what was the catalyst for changing the logo? Because I'm just trying to, like, I, we've had a lot of discussions since 2017 when we, I was up here when we temporarily, temporarily, it's been seven years.
Yeah.
Changed the logo to reflect Centennial. Subsequent to that, we had a really lengthy conversation about honoring the existing logo, especially because we have the four stars up there, which are the police officers that lost their lives. So I'm just, it looks like we're still using it, but it's more subdued and faint in the background. I just don't, yeah, please.
Sorry to interrupt. There is no difference, there is no, um, change to the city seal. The seal is the same with the four stars. We have the description and the meaning of the seal. This is more of a logo, so this means that it can be used for more, less official, more lighthearted, more branding kind of activities rather than having the seal on everything.
And I think also to your question, the impetus as well was the websites. When we redid the main website and the, um, department websites, we needed to put something up there. And the, needed a little bit more branding than just the seal. But the Centennial logo wasn't quite the right look and feel for that at the time. So we've now combined all the different parts that have been out there to give some guidance around that.
After what it's worth, I, I think it's application-dependent, but I don't love that we're moving away from, as clunky as this might seem to some, this is a hundred-year-plus tradition with a lot of stuff that is El Segundo, specifically still to this day. So, uh, I just, I guess I struggle with, when I see it in different locations, like if I, for example, if I saw the mayor walking around town with his shirt on, I'm thinking about what I saw recently with the City of LA and what they were wearing, and it was really impressive. The City of Los Angeles seal or logo, it's apparently a seal, I guess, is a really impressive piece of art that they wear. And we've struggled, I think, with getting our seals placed properly when we're out and about, either city personnel or council or whatever. I just think that if it's just the City of El Segundo like that, to me, it's not doing it justice, but that's my personal opinion.
Yeah, definitely, the seal is definitely an option, if that's what people would want to wear. It's either that or the logo.
Business cards would have the seal or the logo?
That it has the logo.
They'd have that subdued one. So it's like they seal in the background, faint with the, yeah, okay. I don't love that personally, but thank you.
Other council discussion? I mean, I could not be further out of my element.
I mean, I have more issue with the picture of the beach, to be honest, but I'm gonna, I don't know, let that go.
All right, with that said.
Presentation's fine, thank you. I was just looking at my business card.
With the seal on it.
With the seal on it. I like the seal too. I hear you, true.
You do have the seal in the QR code that's on the receipt.
So if you scan the QR code, you get the seal?
No.
You go to the website for the seal. I just don't think we should lose the seal. It should be prominent. And if we're going to change the seal of El Segundo and make it less prominent, that should be a further discussion than just a receive and file about the brand identity for the year.
Okay.
Oh, if we're changing the seal.
We're not changing the seal.
I am going to be sick that day. But we kind of are because we're changing the way it's being displayed. So when you see the seal, it's no longer front and center prominent. It's faint in the background with the call-out on the new logo. That's my only point.
In some instances, yeah.
Some instances, yeah.
Right, that's correct. But I hear what you're saying, and we will go back, look at this, make sure that we have the seal prominently used. If you, um, like, for example, if any city council member wanted a T-shirt with a seal on it, that's absolutely.
Don't get me wrong, I like the logo. I think you're using it really well. The only other thing I didn't love is the, sorry, inconsistency between that font, Rec Park, and the regular one. I don't know why we wouldn't just use the same font consistently between that and.
Is that because of the other website?
Well, El Segundo Connect as well, like, that is a different font than what we're using everywhere else.
So, um, for the Rec Park Library logo, that came to be prior to, um, even having a communications program. So that's a historical kind of grandfathered-in logo.
But the El Segundo Connect one, why is that a different type set?
That's a good question.
It just looks, it looks, you go from this really elegant one to like this big, clunky, Arial-looking font one that just doesn't.
It is in keeping with the brand colors and the font, but you're right, it doesn't look like the others.
Yeah. That being my only feedback. Unless I come up with something else. Well, I'm just being honest here.
Yeah, I.
I know if you need an essay to take up the whole page, you use Courier New. I remember that from college.
So I will say that this isn't a branding exercise in that we've totally rehauled the brand, and we've, you know, gone through several hundred-thousand-dollar, um, project to redo all of our logo and our seal and everything else. This is working within what we already have. We had the El Segundo Where Big Ideas Take Off logo. People seem to like that typography and the look of that, so we built that in to Start Here to kind of be consistent and not keep it coming up. So this is something that's been developed over years, um, that we're trying to really rail in now. And so that when we make future considerations, we'll at least have some guiding document to, a guiding document to really look at and say, how does this fit in with the rest of what we have? And it's all in one place, and it's all, um, described and, uh, guided in terms of the font and the typography and the, the treatment. So we're hoping that this only leads to more consistency with the brand. It's not perfect.
Going forward, is there a process by which the, the Rec and Park logo will join the rest of the family of logos? Or is that an undertaking?
If you so choose, yes. I'll go for it.
So this logo predates me even, but I know that the staff feel a really strong connection to this because if you go, if you look at it, um, there, it's, it's representative of the rec, the parks, the library, there's the book, the baseball. So of course, if the council wants to make a change, we will move along with that, but I know they're very, trust me, I tried to change it when I started, and it was not well-received.
I'm not in favor of us running around with solutions looking for problems. With that in mind, just, I'll entertain any motion to approve the brand guidelines?
So moved.
Baldino, seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Thank you.
All right, unanimous? Oh, oh, four one, sorry. Madam Clerk, we have a four one to approve the brand guidelines. Uh, would anyone like to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending the El Segundo Municipal Code, Chapter 1 to 3, to update the city logo and associated regulations and penalties for violations?
Boyle will introduce.
Very well. All right, uh, so when I was, when are we going to have the second reading? September, or February 4th? All right.
February 4th, and I'll take that as, as your reading of the title.
That is my reading of the title.
Beautiful.
Consider it read. All right, any objection to moving up item 19? Because I know we have some people from item 19 here. 19 is our, uh, the pension trust issue. Any objections?
Nope.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice, uh, Mayor Proton and council members. I was anticipating to go at about 8:30, but, um, I, caught me off guard. We were waiting for Mark Schuster from our Schuster Advisory Group who oversees our pension.
If, if he's not here, we can, we can wait. We're just doing that because I saw the former treasurer's here and I know it's on a tight timeline.
He was on his way to 6:30, so hopefully he'll be here soon.
We can, we can move out around along as scheduled then until he gets here. That's totally fine? Okay, very well. Just to belay my last, we will go to item 13. First reading of an ordinance amending the El Segundo Municipal Code, Title 1 and 7C, excuse me, 7A and 7C, to increase staff and management procurement and signature authority and adjust the procurement thresholds consistent with California Assembly Bill 2192. City Mayor, who will present this item?
Our city attorney, Joaquin Vasquez, will present this item.
City Attorney, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Mayor Proton, council. All right, there we go. Magic. Lily, I might need you to. Yeah. All right, it's hidden battery. Okay. Background, so basically we have three buckets of, of regulations for, for purchases that we're looking to update. The first is, um, one chapter regarding non-construction, another chapter concerns, um, basic, um, signature authority requirements, and the third concerns, um, public contracting, construction contracts. And, um, the, as has been the case for years, we implement, um, a, a streamlined construction contracting, um, process that's enabled under state law. It has the worthy title of Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. Some people call it UPCA. I'm just going to call it the act. UPCA doesn't really roll off the tongue, but, um, the impetus for the change is that last bullet at the bottom. There was recent legislation, AB 2192, that kicked up the thresholds for these, um, streamlined bidding procedures, under state law. So, um, to reflect those state law changes due to increases in construction costs and inflationary pressures, you'll see, um, the different thresholds getting kicked up. So direct contract, basically without any bidding, goes from $60,000 to $75,000. goes from $60,000 to $75,000. Informal bidding goes from $200,000 to $200,000 or less for informal bidding. And anything over $220,000 now requires formal bidding. So we took this, this was last updated by the council six years ago due to prior legislation kicking up the thresholds to analogously increase non-construction dollar thresholds. So what does that look like for department managers? That goes from $5,000 to $7,500. Directors, $25,000, $35,000. City manager, $50,000 or less to $75,000 or less. And anything above that, $75,000 now will go to council, whereas previously that was over $50,000. And for, given an audit back in 2019, there was a recommendation to also incorporate procedures for federal procurement, which we're grafting into the ordinance. And we're also gonna analogously update bidding and procurement procedures for these non-construction processes. And this is the other, the other bucket as far as who can sign a contract. We have the director authority going from $25,000 to $35,000 or less. City manager, again, going from $50,000 or less to $75,000 or less, unless city council authorization authorizes that, and the mayor can sign any contract. There, you'll see the asterisks next to the city manager, and the carve-out in the ordinance is for, is pursuant to the Government Claims Act. Under the government code for government claims, like certain litigation settlements, that authority for the city manager is still pursuant to state law, gonna be capped at $50,000. But outside of that scenario, the proposal is to go to the $75,000 threshold. And the recommendation is to approve the ordinance for first reading and schedule a second reading for the next regular meeting on February 4th. And can I ask any questions you may have?
Council questions?
Why do we wanna move it up? I guess, what's the impetus for increasing the limit, other than convenience?
Well, I wouldn't think, I think it's to account for inflationary pressures across the board that we've seen over the past six years or so. So state law is already kicking up the threshold for construction-related costs. So it creates an ease of workflow when staff knows whether it's a construction or a non-construction contract, who has the ability to sign what. So it makes sense just to proportionally kick up the increases down the line.
They're gonna come before, not consent anyway, typically, right? So we'll have an opportunity, even with the, if it exceeds the threshold, is what I'm saying.
If it exceeds the threshold, if it's, so for now, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of increasing the threshold, but thank you.
And the bare minimum would be to solely increase the construction thresholds pursuant to state law. The add-ons that we're tacking are for non-construction and signature authority.
Other comments, questions?
Yeah, I get that under state law, we as a city have to enact that, so the construction will go up. I am not opposed to raising, due to inflationary standards, the fact that, you know, things cost more, so I'm not opposed to it.
I will say that I am not opposed to the construction with the cost of goods going up, but services are a unique window for potential abuse. I think that some of you remember when we were doing city manager interviews a few iterations ago, we had a city manager applicant who had been a former city manager to neighboring city who regaled us with the stories of the misuse and how uncomfortable he instantly became with his threshold when people were continually showing up with contracts for $1,000 less than the reportable threshold. So I have concern, you know, we went through, we just raised it to 50, but two years ago, three years ago, we just raised it to 50. We did 25.
Six years ago.
Six years? No. Wasn't that, was it that long ago?
2019.
We were at 25 for a long time, and then to raise it to 50 was-
The last construction one.
Okay. Yeah, no, the city manager discretion one, I think we held the line with real trepidation. And this is not in any way casting aspersions on the, you know, values and ethics of our current staff, but there is a, the oversight mechanism for this is some regular report that would come out to all the city manager expenses or department head expenses below that, and that's a report that just gets buried, that no one reviews. So I would, I am comfortable raising the goods piece and the construction piece. I do not, I am not in favor of raising the threshold for the city manager discretion to spend above $50,000.
I concur. Well then, to make it clean, we should just be changing the state-required public contracting. Everything else will remain the same. Is that-
Excuse me. I think that would be the cleanest way.
Yeah.
Because if we bifurcate for non-construction between goods and services, it would be administratively-
So the only thing we'd be raising will be the state-required public bidding of construction jobs. Everything else will have its same pre-existing limits and thresholds.
Understood. Okay, and I think we can, if it's the council's pleasure, approve for first reading the ordinance with that modification, and then we'll come back with a second reading to confirm.
Do I have to read that by title?
Either you or I can read it.
I would prefer you do, because I don't know what we just did. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. No, I would just, I'd rather you read it. I just screwed it up last time, so I defer to you on that.
All right, let's see. This is the logo, and here we go. All right, so an ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code, Chapter 1-7C only now, to amend the city's purchasing code to recognize, actually, let me pause. I just wanna, aside from the construction mirroring the state law, there is that nuance about federal procurement disobiding by federal guidelines for purchases. That wouldn't change our thresholds, but I do request that we at least maintain that other small nuance to make sure that we're aligned with federal procurement laws.
Is there any opposition to abiding by federal procurement laws?
No.
I wouldn't think so.
Thank you. So I'll continue to recognize federal requirements for methods of procurement and update public project bidding requirements and cost thresholds under the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act is available for first reading. And we just, they just sponsor for the first reading?
I want to, yeah. Boyle introduces. And now we will schedule this also for February 4th? Very well. Now with item 13 done, now we will move to item 19. Is item 19 ready?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and city council members. The item before you is an update to our investment policy statement, IPS, for the Pension Stabilization Trust Account to possibly include cryptocurrency as a viable investment asset class. The additional background for the particular Pension Stabilization Trust is that currently what staff is asking for is not the overall city's investment portfolio, which currently sits at $130 million. That's mandated by the state and the policy, so that we're not including cryptocurrency there. Now, the city does have two 115 trusts, which is an irrevocable trust per IRS guidelines that we designate for certain purposes. So we have two accounts. One is the OPEP, which is the Other Post-Employment Benefit Medical Retiree Trust Fund. That's currently sitting at $35 million. That's overseen by CalPERS. We're not asking for that to be revised either, and there is no policy that sits with CalPERS. It's up to their discretion to make the investments. Now, the item before you is for the 115 trust for the Pension Stabilization Trust Fund. This one is currently sitting at a little over $6 million, and that does have an IPS, an investment policy statement. And that's overseen by our Schuster Advisory Group. I have Mark Schuster who's back there, who just attended the meeting. Just for potential questions from the council. Regards to the Pension Stabilization Trust Fund, the council made a direction to seat the, opened the account and seat the fund initially with a million dollars. And the total contribution the city has made over the years has been $4.5 million, a little over $4.5 million. And now the trust fund sits at a little over $6.2 million. And that's really due to Mark Schuster and his advisory group making the portfolio grow, and they've been doing a great job investing our funds. Now, regards to the item before you, late 2024, Matt Robinson, our city-elected treasurer, former elected city treasurer who's here attending the meeting, he proposed a cryptocurrency to the city's 115 trust program, specifically cryptocurrency exchange-funded, exchange funds, ETFs. Not Bitcoins or crypto-specific like Bitcoin, but ETF, which is an accumulation of crypto funds. Matt presented his analysis to the city manager and myself regarding the benefits and risk of potentially investing into the cryptocurrency ETF. The current IPS does not specifically state cryptocurrency as an allowable investment category. Our investment fiduciary, Schuster Advisory Group, does not currently hold cryptocurrency in an investment portfolio that they manage. In order to add cryptocurrency, the city would have to revise the IPS and obtain approval from the Independent Treasury Alta Trust. Staff did attach the revised IPS and the Investment Advisement Agreement Amendment to the staff report. And if council does give direction to go ahead and include cryptocurrency, that would be the IPS that will be approved. At this time, if council does direct staff to include cryptocurrency, we're recommending a max percentage of 2.5% of the overall portfolio. That limits us due to just volatility and the uncertainty of cryptocurrency. Furthermore, the Pension Stabilization Trust Fund's asset allocation target will remain unchanged at 50% equity and 50% fixed income. This concludes SAS' presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Council questions?
Paul, based on your experience working for cities and as a CFO, do you recommend the city of El Segundo invest in cryptocurrencies?
At this time, I've had, I've done my research, and also I reached out to my cohorts. And being that cryptocurrency is still in its infant state and as its volatile state, that I would say, I would recommend that we kind of take a backseat, in my opinion, that we take a backseat and just kind of observe and see how the cryptocurrency market plays out. And then it won't be too late to revisit it maybe six months, a year from now. That would be my recommendation.
Councilor Kildare?
Are there any other cities that you know of who have done something similar?
Not local cities. I do know that Matt Robinson, our former city treasurer, when he presented, he did have various other, I believe, out-of-California states that have put in for cryptocurrency as form of investment. I do know, in talking to Mark Schuster, our fiduciary for the Pension Stabilization Trust, he did say that CalPERS even does invest into crypto, but a very, very minute portion of it, 1/100 of the overall portfolio, they have a little bit of crypto. So there is some exposure, but to my understanding, not any local agencies have invested into cryptocurrency.
Thank you.
Councilor Boyle?
I would, Mayor, if it's okay, I'd love to ask the former treasurer to say a few words, if that's okay with you. And also I'd ask, if CalPERS is in for 1%, what are we proposing relative to our overall portfolio, much less, correct? I think, Mr. Schuster? Oh, 1/100, okay, so 0.1%.
Yes.
Thank you. Or 0.01.
0.01.
Which is probably still more than the amount of our 115.
It's a very small portion. It's 1/100 of the percent, so you're looking-
No, that's what we're proposing as well?
No, 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 no.
I'm asking, what are we-
CalPERS-
What would this be relative to?
This would be a cap of 2.5%.
Yes, 2.5% of our overall portfolio of 6 million, so you're looking at a little less than $160,000.
Of 6 million, but overall, we have a lot more funds invested. It's just that we can't touch those other ones per policy. So if you took into account the other funds, what would it be roughly?
With the current 2.5% proposed? It was close, when we calculated, it was a million dollars. It would have been a million dollars for my overall, if we combined the city's portfolio, the OPEB trust fund, and then this Pension Stabilization Trust Fund, we combine those two, when we do 2.5, it was a million dollars.
Okay, not totally following, but thank you.
No, I think, I think, Councilor Boyle, I think your question is, $160,000 is what percentage of our total portfolio of asset classes, which is a little distorted because instead of just owning into CalPERS, we bought out our CalPERS with the, with the bond. But yeah, if you did $160,000 of our total exposure of whatever it is, 156 million, it's obviously a much smaller number.
That would be a small percentage, yes.
We want to bring up Schuster or treasurer?
You wanted Matt?
Any objection, Paul?
No, no.
Former treasurer, come on down, sir.
If we are gonna offer an opportunity to members of the public to speak, I just would want to open that up to-
Oh, yeah, all members of the public. Anybody else like to speak from the public? Would even the former treasurer like to speak, or are we just press-ganging you into this? All right.
All right, so I guess I wasn't fully prepared to kind of open discussion with this, but I, I guess I'll kind of play out some points that I spoke with, with Councilman Drew Boyle. So the way that I'm looking, like, I understand that this is like on the third rail for a lot of people, and this is a very polarizing topic, and I get that, totally get that. I think that our entire line of thinking was not that this is going to allow us to have golden curtains in the city and, you know, pay, you know, change things. The way that I was looking at this was, this is, this is a PR project. This is, if we're looking to make headlines and have, you know, look like we're on the forefront of, you know, you know, technology and we're trying to attract these other businesses into the city of El Segundo, we want to be kind of a forward-thinking kind of tech hub, which I know that is important to us. This is a small price, potentially a small price to pay for getting that kind of reputation. I think that, you know, also from a portfolio standpoint, Bitcoin is, is an uncorrelated asset with our portfolio. I mean, there's correlation there, but the math behind it is that if you add an uncorrelated asset to a portfolio, especially in a small amount like this, then you can actually decrease or slightly barely increase the risk of the overall portfolio. So I think from a portfolio standpoint, you know, unless we're just looking at this one position with a microscope, which is gonna carry quite a bit of volatility, I don't think that it's gonna really move the needle, and I think that that's a good thing. I think that it's, you know, I don't know where Bitcoin's going, I don't know where crypto's going, but I do think that it's being accepted by more and more people. The new, the new, the new president has obviously made that part of his agenda. I think it's only gaining popularity, and I, I do think that, obviously, if we wait, you know, that's fine, and maybe we never invest in it, but I think that the opportunity, the bigger opportunity that I see is from a PR perspective. So, you know, again, this position could lose money and it could make a lot of money, but I think that in the grand scheme of things, we have a $500 million plan assets with CalPERS. And even 2.5%, which frankly, I, I don't know, I don't know if that's enough to move the needle. If we're just looking to kind of say, hey, we did it, you know, $150,000 is, you know, you know, it's not gonna move the needle either way. I was kind of a proponent of more than that. I think that a million is something that, you know, would actually be something that people would notice, but I think, again, 1 million out of $500 million portfolio. I mean, every year, our CalPERS plan returns somewhere between 20 and 30 million dollars. Sometimes it's down 20 or 30 million dollars, sometimes it's up 20 or 30 or 40 or 50. And we're talking about a 100, or sorry, a $1 million total investment that, yeah, it loses 50%, that would not be good, but that's $500,000 as part of a- it loses 50%, that would not be good, but that's $500,000 as part of a $500 million plan that returns $20 million a year potentially. So maybe it's 19.5 one year, maybe it's 21 one year. I just, again, I think that this tiny portion, I'm not doing, I'm not saying that we should do it because this is an amazing investment, and I know that it's going to triple in a month. I'm doing it because I think it's a small price to pay for attracting talent and potentially, you know, the PR that we could get. And I think I've already spoken way too much, but anyway, so there are no bad questions. I know, again, a lot of people are uncomfortable with this, including me. This is like the hardest, hardest time I've ever had up here. Anyway, should I sit down or am I way?
You, you are excused. No, thank you, thank you very much. Director Chung, any further questions or comments from the council? Please, go ahead.
I don't know if you wanted to hear from Mr. Schuster or not, that's why I was waiting on the comment, Mayor, if you want to, or, did you want to?
No, I just, I wanted to answer any questions.
Okay. I did some analysis. Well, Matt, as you mentioned, brought this idea forward, I don't know, late 2024, and so there's some analysis that was done. And as Matt already said, I mean, the risk is small, given what we already have invested. Here's some of the pros. Potential high returns, you already mentioned that. Portfolio diversification, it could reduce overall risk by diversifying asset classes, especially if traditional markets underperform. Inflation hedge, Bitcoin is often viewed as a hedge against inflation due to its fixed supply of 21 million coins, potentially protecting pension funds against the erosion of value. Modernizing pension strategy, investing in a cryptocurrency exchange fund could position El Segundo as forward-thinking and innovative in financial management. We've talked about risk-taking as one of our core values. Potential for early mover advantage, as an early adopter among municipalities, El Segundo could set an example and potentially benefit from future cryptocurrency growth and adoption, which has already happened in Argentina, Miami, and some other places. Interestingly enough, the president of Argentina was actually at the inauguration, and that's a symbol of what, under the czar, which is David Sacks, for AI and crypto is going to happen with the new administration. Some of the cons, volatility and risk, Bitcoin's price is highly volatile, which Matt already talked about. Regulatory and legal risks, cryptocurrency regulations are still evolving. Public perception risks, some residents may perceive the investment as speculative or risky, potentially causing public backlash. Fiduciary concerns, pension fund managers have a fiduciary duty to protect retirees' benefits and liquidity constraints. While Bitcoin is relatively liquid, a sharp market down, turk of forced sales to, at a loss to meet pension obligations. Again, it's small relative to our overall investment. Media benefits, national attention, El Segundo would likely receive widespread media coverage as one of the first cities to integrate cryptocurrency into its pension investments, enhancing its visibility. Tech-friendly image, the city could be branded as a forward-thinking, tech-savvy sub, attracting young professionals, startups, and fintech companies. Positive local buzz, progressive investments could inspire local residents and businesses to view El Segundo as a leader in innovation, which we've been talking about for a decade. Economic development benefits, attraction of blockchain companies invested in Bitcoin could single, signal El Segundo's openness to blockchain technology, attracting cryptocurrency-related businesses and startups. Encouraging financial innovation, the move could spur innovation and entrepreneurial activity in the city, fostering a reputation as a cutting-edge economic hub. Increased talent pool, which Matt already talked about, high-value jobs. Economic spillover effects, attracting crypto and blockchain companies could increase demand for local services, office space, and housing, positively affecting the city's economic base, et cetera, et cetera. So for $160,000, we spend, we spend more on that in marketing and economic development every year, and we might actually get a return on this. So to me, it's low risk. Thank you.
Further council questions, comments? Mayor Protem?
I understand the argument of wanting to get PR. And if it wasn't pension funds, I might see myself being talked into doing this. But when I, when I read the statute, Government Code 53, 53600, it reminded me that we have a fiduciary duty to these funds. And what 53600.3 says, "All governing bodies, local agencies authorized to make investments of public funds are therefore fiduciaries and subject to the prudent investor standard. A trustee shall act with care, skill, prudence, due diligence, in the circumstances then prevailing, that a prudent person acting in a like capacity and familiarity with those would use in the conduct of funds to safeguard the principal and maintain the liquidity needs of the agency." 53600.5 states, "When investing, reinvesting, purchasing, acquiring, exchanging public funds, the primary objective of a trustee should be to safeguard the principal of the funds. The secondary objective should be to meet the liquidity needs. The third objective should be to get a return." So I, I understand there is a lot of excitement around crypto, but I would not be in favor of putting someone else's pension funds at any risk, no matter how small. And I feel like by telling me, well, these aren't funds subject to the state law that tells cities how to act prudently for the commitments and obligations they have done, and telling me that we're going to put a very, very small amount, to me, makes it sound like this is not worth doing, that the risk is there, the risk is inherent in what this asset is, even if it's an ETF or anything else, and that it's okay for cities to be safe and boring. I like my safe town. And so I, I can't support the investment of pension funds into any type of cryptocurrency at, at this stage.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilor Jeru?
Yeah, I mean, I, this, this item is basically brought up, I, I don't, I don't think it's Matt's item. This is, I just want to make sure I understand that the reason why it was brought up and the reason why we're looking at doing it, from what I'm hearing, is that PR is basically the impetus for it. That, that's kind of what I'm hearing. And I think that's, and I have an equal problem with that. I mean, a couple of things I've heard tonight, there's a lot of dancing around the idea, we want to look like we're forward-facing. Between the tech weeks and all the businesses that we've had in here, and we continue to have, all the press that we've gotten for that, I don't believe that investing $160,000 in crypto is all of a sudden going to hurt us. I, I don't think it's a good idea, number one. One of the questions came up about, you know, to be, companies would be more willing to invest in El Segundo potentially if we invested in crypto. I mean, does, does anyone look at our, our investment portfolio before they decide to put down roots here? I, I don't believe that's the case. So I, I just, other than PR, I don't see a reason for it. And as a result, I don't, not really quite sure why we're entertaining it. So I'm, I'm not for this.
Mayor, one final thought, if I may? Please, go ahead.
CalPERS, we heard, is, is the ultimate, they're, they're invested in crypto, correct? They are the ultimate arbiter of fiduciary responsibilities for pension funds in the state. To Mayor Protem Baldino's point, to Councilman Jeru's point, no one's going to look at our investments, but they're going to see all the signals out there when they see that we actually do invest in this. And some of the companies that are here in town, that the mayor and I have spent a lot of time with the last couple of years, are really, are absolutely directly in this space, and they are paying attention to these things. That's all I'd say. Thank you.
Can I comment for a second?
Councilor Kildare?
I mean, I guess along those lines, even if we play out the PR narrative avenue, there is a potential to not be able to control the narrative and get negative PR from this, given the ties to the pension fund. One one hundredth of 1% is much smaller than 2.5%. I think for me, the concerns about seeming like it could take a negative spin is enough to not explore it at this time.
Thank you. I have a couple of thoughts. So to, to sort of step back a bit from the individual crypto pieces, you know, our, as it stands, our pensions exist in a few buckets, right? We have our big pension obligation bond, which eats 90% of our obligation, give or take. We have our OPEB trust, which is fully funded, right? Open, fully funded. And this little piece, this 115, we maintain this as our fudge factor. This is for UAL variations, should they appear. So when we bonded out our CalPERS, our unfunded liability, excuse me, we intentionally did that, we under-bonded it to make sure we had a little bit of wiggle, so we wouldn't overfund it. But the 115 is what we use to accommodate that, that variation. That said, the 115, the other win on it is it has fewer rules, right? So that's why it was able to grow so spectacularly, so quickly. And a lot of us who sit through these CalPERS meetings, while they refuse to invest in whole asset classes, you know, and, and then finally they allocated 10% to equities, which was like a huge deal, and we were sitting there like, why won't you buy Amazon? Well, Amazon at the time was triple B, so they couldn't touch Amazon stocks. I'm like, Amazon's not going anywhere. So the 115 exists to take a bit of risk, to my mind, and as I read this, this is not a direction to our, our finance director to spend 2.5% on a crypto fund, right? It's just saying that there's an allowable asset class up to 2.5% that they could include. So it's not a direction to go buy tulips in Amsterdam. It's, it's saying, hey, if you want, you know, to, to capture the tulip craze, go grab it. That all being said, you know, I think there is a degree of risk in it, but there are major institutional players and very large investment funds that track these ETFs all the time. I mean, BlackRock has 40% of the market, I think, in these things. They're certainly not going anywhere. No, obviously, they can afford to lose more than we can, but $160,000 is a top potential investment of our slush fund in an asset class. I mean, he could be up here presenting to me on Indian cricket futures, and I'd be like, all right, if that's, you know, part of what you think is, is there. I am not in this business, and I defer expertise to this, but allowing an asset class into our 115 trust with a cap on it, I don't think necessarily violates our fiduciary obligations. The 115 is there with fewer rules for this sort of very reason. I don't know enough about this market to weigh in one or another, one way or another, and to my reading of this, we're not directing him to spend money on it, we're just expanding an asset class for his consideration. And that being said, I don't object to it on principle, but that's my take. All right, is, is there?
I, I, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but in the end, it's going to be up to the treasurer to decide whether or not to do that. And we don't have a treasurer right now.
Yeah, so we've consolidated those rules.
Right, so, so this was really to discuss whether or not we felt comfortable enough to invest in Bitcoin, in Bitcoin. That, that's what this is about. We can, we can throw, you know, powdered sugar on the rest of it and hide it, but that's really what this discussion's about. So in the end, do we feel comfortable with that, I think, is the genesis of, of what this is about. If it's to give authority, I mean.
We could allow this, and he could show up a year from now and never having bought a single one, right? Or he could show up and say, I've spent 1.75% of the fund on an ETF that's tied to, you know, some coin that I haven't heard of yet.
Well, maybe it's time to hear from Mr. Schuster then. I mean, in the end, that's, that's his role, correct? Or it's who we're investing through. What's your take?
Well, first of all, we as a firm do not buy Bitcoin. We do not put it into portfolios. We manage almost $9 billion for both cities, corporations, and high net worth individuals. When somebody comes to us and requests to purchase Bitcoin or cryptocurrency, we do purchase it on their behalf. However, we put it into a nondiscretionary, non-fiduciary fund and don't charge for it. It's their wish to go out and buy it. Would we normally go out and buy it and put it part of a portfolio? We do not.
That's, so, so to be clear, that's individual coins or an index fund?
Index fund.
Oh, interesting.
We do not, as a firm, we do not buy cryptocurrency and put them into our portfolios. We have held them on behalf of clients for that purpose. Now, the 115 we created was that, was the ability to have flexibility and, and purchase assets. We had a city almost two years ago during the Silicon Valley collapse of banks request only treasuries. Your PARS and CalPERS plan couldn't have done that. They were so worried that they wanted to buy treasuries. So we bought treasuries for six months until things settled down. So that's, that's kind of our view on the purpose, but if I'm looking at it as a pure fiduciary, which means, to your point, Mayor, I must only do what's in the best interest of the client. As an investment, I wouldn't put it in. As a marketing component, that's, that's up to the city from a marketing standpoint. But again, we're at the discretion, and if there is a nondiscretionary asset, we were comfortable enough to say, sure, I'll put 2.5% of 6 million dollars in it. If you asked for more than 6 million, we would not do it. In addition to that, though, you also have a trust and a trustee, okay? Your trustee, just like PARS has and CalPERS has in 115s, they have to approve this because they have a trustee responsibility. And in the event you wanted to do that, so as Paul mentioned, you'd have to get the approval of the trustee. We've, we've brought that to their attention. Their immediate response was, we would not allow actual coin. We would consider potentially a small investment into an ETF, but no more than anything of a small investment into that. And that was not a final answer, that's something we would consider, and we'd get back to you as soon as possible. To my knowledge, we do work for 100 cities, there isn't another city in the state of California that has that in their 115, but I want to caveat, the two platforms that are available don't allow it. Those are pooled assets inside CalPERS and PARS, and you're pooled with everybody else. So if the city today said, we'd really like to buy one-year treasuries, we could do that. You can't do that in your CalPERS plan.
Any questions for Mr. Schuster?
Yeah.
Did they indicate what dollar amount, if they approve it, they'd be comfortable with?
Well, I think it would all depend upon your overall assets. And again, I know you have just in excess of $40 million in your total 115. They would probably be comfortable somewhere in the small percentages. And I want to be, I want to go back to something that was brought up earlier, because we were, a lot of numbers were being thrown around of 1 one hundredth. This is simply based upon our portfolio manager's investigation into the CalPERS-defined benefit plan, not your 115. Your 115 is in a State Street index fund. It's a robo-fund. It is not being managed on a day-to-day basis in a managed portfolio. However, the original company that they owned was not into Bitcoin. They had started buying Bitcoin, and then they inevitably became a 100% cryptocurrency company. So today, just like the US government, they own a, a company that has some Bitcoin in it, which makes up that 1 one hundredth.
Isn't that true for many multinational companies?
A lot of them, but again, the US government today owns 20 billion. Now, that was all seized Bitcoin, okay? That was not purchased. That's not to say they won't keep it and, and it becomes an asset class in the future. But again, we're looking at it as purely an investment fiduciary, not as a marketing
Further questions?
But we will get back to you regarding the trustee's allowance on, would it be 1%, 2%, 5% overall inside the, and the trust? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Schuster. All right, would anyone like to move, to approve the investment policy statement for the pension stabilization trust account?
Boils so moved.
Is there a second? A double second? All is in favor?
Aye.
All is against?
No.
No.
It is defeated, three to two.
Thank you, Mr. Chung.
Thank you, former treasurer.
All right, we will go back in time to item 14. City Attorney, will you give us the legislative update, please?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Lilly, for firing that up. So just some table setting. The state legislature introduced about 5,000 bills during the last session. About 1,000 of them got signed into law, and of course, voters approved others that will or already have taken effect. And this is an overview of.
Quick question, City Attorney, how many days is the legislature in session?
Oh, geez.
Like 110 or something, 120?
How many they're doing per day?
I mean, that is a remarkable, 50 bills a day?
It's a machine. So we'll start with some, we'll start with the notable state proposition, well-publicized, but just to get down to some of the details, Proposition 36, approved by 64% of the voters, the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act, changes punishments for certain theft and drug crimes, turns certain misdemeanors into felonies. turns certain misdemeanors into felonies. One specific example is theft of items worth $950. I've been, I'm still stuck on the thousands from the purchasing ordinance. But $950 or less is now a felony if the person has two or more priors for certain theft crimes like shoplifting, burglary, carjacking. And the sentence can be lengthened by three years if there are three or more people that committed the crime together. This addresses organized retail theft, which most people are aware of. Additionally, there's an allowable charge of a treatment mandated felony for possession of hard drugs as defined. If the person has two or more priors for certain drug crimes, what are hard drugs? They include fentanyl, heroin, cocaine, and methamphetamine. And under that scenario, the charge, no charge will be imposed if ultimately the person completes the treatment. A notable county measure, County Measure A, sales tax measure, which has interplay with our El Segundo Measure C. Of course, in 2020, El Segundo voters approved Measure C about 85%. At that time, the total sales cap was at 10.25%. Measure C was designed to keep sales tax dollars in El Segundo when another taxing entity like the county submits a sales tax measure to voters that would increase sales tax within the maximum allowable rate. You may recall that the cap was raised from 10 and 1/4% to 10 and 1/2% in 2023 under AB 1679. Measure C authorizes up to a 3/4 cent city sales tax upon placement of the outside entity's tax measure on the ballot and is allowed to continue if the voters approve the submitted measure. That played out last year in June when the county board submitted Measure A to its voters. Two months later, about, the city council declined to impose the tax and decided to suspend the imposition of Measure C. This was August of last year. In November, the voters approved Measure A by about 58% of the vote. And just to note that simple majority was only required because it was a citizen measure, not a county board measure. What does Measure A do? It imposes a half-cent sales tax that replaces the expired Measure H, quarter-cent sales tax. And the new sales tax rate is now at 9.75% with the maximum sales tax of 10 and 1/2%. So we see there's a current 3/4 cent gap between the current and the maximum. Jumping into state housing laws, and I think of that 5,000 bills, I have to say a good amount were related to housing or land use. We're gonna run through a few of these. AB 1886 disallows local government self-certification of a housing element. Certification requires HCD or court determination. AB 2023 raises the legal standard for cities to challenge HCD's determination of a non-compliant housing element. That means basically there's a rebuttable presumption of invalidity of a housing element. AB 1037 allows the attorney general to fine a city between $10,000 and $50,000 a month for certain housing violations such as failing to ministerially approve an affordable housing project required by law or even adopting a compliant housing element. AB 1883 imposes additional requirements for a city's denial or conditional approval of a housing development project. For example, a city cannot impose a development, an objective development standard that would make a project otherwise infeasible. And it cannot deny a builder's remedy project if it lacks a substantial compliant housing element. And another note there is that.
Guys, how broadly are they construing the substantially compliant? That's the significant bone of contention because you end up waiting on them to make a determination. And while that clock is running, you're running up against the builder's remedy.
Yeah, I mean, it's really until you have a certification letter in lieu of, it looks good, but you still need to do some cleanup or some zoning amendments, you need to have the final certification from HCD.
That's just at the pleasure of some unelected guy named Ray, who sits up there and we just wait for Ray to send a letter?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
But we've been certified, right?
Yes, yes, we are.
We're gonna go through this seven years from now. We're gonna be shaking down Ray, hoping he comes into work that day.
SB 450 loosens restrictions to facilitate development of SB 9 lot splits and duplexes. Basically, for, previously, you were only allowed to demo one quarter of an existing structure. Now you can demo the entire structure to put duplex. It, you can only apply objective standards that apply within the underlying zone. And you may recall some victory laps from, I think it was six charter cities that had a victory determining that, at least as to those six cities, SB 9 did not apply. The judgment in that determined that HCD and the state legislator, state legislature had the ability to make findings to close that gap, and SB 450 closed that gap, so SB 9 applies to charter cities. SB 1211 requires cities to allow up to eight detached ADUs on a multifamily dwelling with an existing multifamily dwelling on site. Previously, that was a cap of two. So again, this is multifamily. And AB 2533 allows for the legalization of unpermitted ADUs and JADUs. It requires cities to publish information related to those units. And these are units constructed before 2020. AB 2243 allows more projects to qualify for AB 211 or SB 6. This is, you may recall, AB 211, SB 6. These are the conversion of office retail parking uses to housing. And this now allows more projects to qualify and increases the cap of 20 acres or less, up to 100 acres if there is a regional mall in play. It reduces affordability requirements for such units and increases the height allowance.
It didn't change any of the radii that it has to be from sensitive facilities? There was a big?
There's still the sensitive for industrial, for certain industrial that cannot abut such a residential development.
In terms of legalizing unpermitted units, that means the owner would still have to go through our permit process.
Yes, yeah. And this is their opportunity to get their previously unpermitted units legalized. SB 1123 tears off of a bill from last year that allowed, that required ministerial approval of subdivisions of 10 or fewer units. Previously, that only applied to multifamily zones. Now that applies to single-family zones. This takes effect July 1. SB 937, yes.
Can you give an example of that last one you just said? What type of multifamily thing would we be approving in a R1 zone?
It would, it would allow for the subdivision of a parcel into 10 parcels. And that would be allowed within a single-family zone. So you can get 10 different parcels chopped up under a subdivision now within a single-family zone, not just multifamily. And it must be ministerial approved.
Are there any parameters around that?
For, the theme for ministerial approvals is it allows for streamlining, and it sensibly restricts disallowance for really clear, verifiable public health and safety.
Like minimum lot size or pre-existing multifamily structure or something on that?
Yeah, so the lot size limit for single-family zones is gonna be, is gonna be 1,200 square feet or bigger for the new lot sizes.
Are you reading off a state law there, or are you looking at R code?
This is the new state law, yeah.
So they've changed the minimum requirements for a lot size in the R1 zone?
Under the ministerial 10 or fewer unit subdivision.
And that just means that someone can come over the counter, no planning commission hearing, no approval from city council, subdivide to these new state standards, and we're forced to approve that?
Yes. SB 937 for housing projects, fees must be collected at occupancy, not with a building permit that would precede occupancy. SB 1820, city staff must provide a fee estimate to a housing project within 30 days of a preliminary application, which is non-binding, and a subsequent total fee calculation 30 days after project approval. AB 2553 modifies the definition of major transit stop. This one's important because there's so many other laws that allow for relaxed parking, relaxed other standards within a certain distance of a major transit stop. So this increases the amount of sites that will qualify as a major transit stop, therefore triggering the further relaxation. And bus service intervals are increased from 15 minutes to 20 minutes to qualify for a major transit stop, which means more density, less parking, et cetera. AB 3177 restricts certain land dedications to wide-end roadways for housing projects. This next one is not necessarily housing-related, but for planning commission zoning code amendments, if it affects property uses, the notice must be for 20 days. Previously, that was 10. AB 211, I'm sorry, 2117 extends a development permit life. Essentially, if there's a dispute, a legal proceeding regarding the permit itself. Other non-housing state laws. This first three, I just wanted to flag as being tethered to a lawsuit that occurred for a water district in San Diego. And another defendant was the city of San Diego, which resulted in a judgment against Otay Water District and $18 million, and San Diego of $78 million. And these three bills are a response to the record of litigation, the evidence that it was allowed in, parameters on the award, and the actual adoption of tiered rates. So the first, AB 2257, allows the city, it has to take action, opt into this, but it allows the city to require a fee protester under Prop 218 to include legal theories along with a fee protest to be able to later file a suit regarding the fee. AB 1827 encourages the adoption of tiered water rates, which make water increasingly expensive as customers use it more to encourage conservation by allowing use of peaking factors to set the tiers. We do think that, that there's a tension there between prevailing case law and this legislative fix. So it would not be unlikely that tax-friendly attorneys, representative groups seek to challenge AB 1827. Similarly, we would not be surprised if there are challenges to SB 1072, where, as was in the case of this, this case in San Diego, for a court determination of an overcharge for water, sewer, trash, basically 218 fees, the repayment must be accomplished through future rate-making credits. This is, the policy there was to avoid having multimillion-dollar awards having to be paid out of reserve funds and potentially crippling water districts and municipalities. But we think there are likely to be challenges there as well.
It seems faulty constructed, right? You overcharge me, and then you give the money back to him after I move?
Yeah, I mean.
That doesn't sound fair.
And is it, is it the same rate pair?
Right, and encumbering Prop 218 and AB 2257, I would assume that the Howard Jarvis Law Center is already have the pitchforks and torches.
Sharpening their swords, yes. On the HR front, AB 2561 requires the city to have a public hearing to present the status of vacancies, recruitment, and employee retention efforts at least once a fiscal year before budget adoption. I know staff is already working on this, getting this in motion. In the scenario where any bargaining unit has an over 20% vacancy, if they request, that unit must be allowed to present certain information at this hearing. AB 2631 requires the FPPC to continue offering AB 1234 ethics training. I know you all are familiar with it, but for the public, this is ethics training that's required under the Political Reform Act. And the FPPC had gone back and forth on whether it had enough funding to continue offering it, and the FPPC will continue to offer it under this bill. And of course, we, you know, our office is always available to offer such training. AB 1170 requires electronic filing of Form 700, the Statement of Economic Interests. SB 1181, SB 1243 modify the Levine Act, which restricts campaign contributions to elected officials. Threshold goes from $250 to $500 and extends the time that officials can refund a contribution to 30 days to avoid running afoul of the act. And there's another basis, a new basis for a records request for the city clerk's office to ask for a 14-day extension. And this is during a governor-declared state of emergency. Back to crime, we have a court having the ability to issue restraining order when sentencing a person for certain retail establishment crimes. Along the same lines, retailer's attorney can also petition for such a restraining order. And SB 1271, AB 1774, these clarify the definition of electric bicycle e-bikes. Prohibits the sale of products and devices that modify speed capabilities, which the council heard about such modifications. And it does bar certain use of lithium-ion batteries in e-bikes that apparently are shown to have a fire risk. And the clarification about what's an e-bike is useful as far as it being able to go more than 20 miles an hour. It's no longer an e-bike, or if it goes more, if it can go, has power more than 750 watts. And so if it's still an e-bike, it can still use bike trails and things like that. But anything above those thresholds is gonna be a motorized bike and have to operate somewhat or like a Vespa, something of that sort. So available to answer, any questions?
Questions for the city attorney?
Thank you.
There seem to be about 40 bills about racing, about impounding cars for racing and street takeovers. One thing I'd like to ask the council, any objection to us asking Director Allen to furnish a response to any of these housing bills or any modifications we need to make? I know we put a lot of work into SB 9 when that came through and making sure that we had standards for lot splits in that regard. Director Allen, I'm not asking you for comments now. I would just say, is it, is that okay if we direct for? Okay, city manager?
I know, I was actually hoping that was gonna be on our agenda because I would know something that you all didn't know yet. No, we just talked about that at Planning Commission. It's on my last meeting, I think so. Yeah, it was a long, lengthy discussion, so.
And basically, what cities were doing was creating objective standards on SB 9 splits. And the state said, any standard you have in your regular R1 has to apply to these splits. And so the question was now, okay, do you want to adopt some of these standards for the splits to the regular R1? Because they all have to be the same. So anytime we think we've got a way to, you know, protect what our city is in local zoning, we get a bill that comes and slaps our hands down, and we're back to square one, basically.
Very well, any further questions? Thank you very much. Item 15, the legislative platform. Deputy City Manager Voss.
Mr. Mayor? 13, please.
Oh, to receive and file? No? Motion to receive and file? Do we have to move to receive and file?
No, I think we just.
Do we just receive and file it? By consensus? Yeah, we're receiving and filing.
There you go.
We have two consents aye. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This will be a brief presentation. This is something that we do annually, or we should be doing annually. And it, the purpose of the legislative platform is to give broad authority to support or oppose legislation that might become before the state legislators. And so what happens often in the city manager's office is that we will receive a request from a congressman's office or senator's office saying, this bill is coming up. Do you support it? Do you oppose it? Can you write a letter on being? Can you write a letter on behalf of city council? And this legislative platform gives us authority now, with your approval, to go ahead and write that letter, as long as it aligns with the platform. So the platform aligns with our strategic plan. Each member, each member of the executive team, all the directors, reviewed their sections of the legislative platform and gave their blessing, made a couple changes here and there. But overarching, the priorities for 2025 are to support efforts to monitor air quality and promote clean air initiatives, support regional economic development policies, pursue funding for projects that improve the quality of life at El Segundo, ensure local city input on all regional land use and planning issues as much as possible, support efforts to increase the amount of transportation funds allocated to local jurisdictions for discretionary projects, oppose unfunded mandates to the city or any new or continuing program service for any new or continuing program service, support local control over the administration of local programs, and ensure LA County's responsibilities for mandated programs are not passed along to the city in the form of undue burdens or financial mandates. And then, within the platform itself, it goes through each department, general government, city clerk's office, community development, finance, et cetera, and says the city supports or the city opposes various issues. So with your approval, this will allow us then to advocate as appropriate on items that fall within this platform. And then one other final point is, if there are changes that come up throughout the year and council wants us to support or oppose something that is not included in the platform, we would come back to council with that request.
Council questions, comments?
This is just writing a letter of support, not allocating resources above and beyond.
Right.
I would ask one element, there's a piece in Public Safety around civil asset forfeiture, which is a very thorny issue, and I think we should withhold a broad statement on that pending any particular legislation. If a particular policy point that has a certain aspect of it, I think we could be thoughtful on that, but I don't think it does us any good to have a broad support of a very thorny issue.
Asset forfeiture.
With it, no, we are in favor of it.
Limiting local police departments' ability to collect and utilize asset forfeiture funds, so we're against limiting.
Yeah, I would just say that any policy, any piece of legislation that comes out, I think we would take that on a case-by-case and not have a broad support of it, because that is, it is, there's notable elements of use and misuse of it. We certainly get a certain amount, we get about $160,000 a year of civil asset forfeiture, 116 or somewhere in there. There's a 1 and a 6, and it's $100,000. And we use it, I mean, but the way, we have a unique position where that's often procured in our conjunction with the airport, you know, there's things that get seized there. That being said, throughout the state of California, there's all kinds of people who run coin laundries who end up with horror stories about trying to find their money. So I think that we should just take those on a case-by-case basis rather than include it in the platform.
Understood.
I'm okay with that. I have no objection.
Any, is that okay with everybody? All right, wouldn't anyone like to move approval of the platform, save my one civil asset forfeiture?
Baldino moves approval as modified by the dice.
Second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well, 5-0.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we do item 17, do we need a quick break? We've been at this two hours. Let's take five minutes? All right, let's come back here at 7:55, so 5 minutes, 50 seconds. All right, are we back for item 16, the Emergency Operations Center recommendation? All right, city manager, you going to report on this?
Yes, I will, Mayor. Thank you. Back in March of last year, the city was fortunately awarded a community project funding grant through Congressman Ted Lieu's office. And at the time we submitted the grant, it was to fund, to partially fund our Emergency Operations Center. So the actual grant was awarded through his office, and we've been working on the logistics of the grant now, because it actually gets funded by FEMA. And then it's managed, though, through the governor's office of emergency services. So there were several layers of working in the grant logistically, so they can end up with us. Tonight's item, though, is to formally accept the grant money, which is $322,500, put it into an account, and then also, what is previously budgeted, was the city's 25% matching grant of $107,500 through our CIP projects. And the essence of receiving the dollars through FEMA and ultimately OES is that we pre-fund and then we get reimbursed as dollars are spent as we improve the EOC. So staff right now, through the Fire Department and IT, are working on a plan, a design plan and a technological plan to provide a pretty sophisticated EOC over in the police conference room where it's located right now. But we will finally have all of the latest and greatest equipment and monitors and so forth and so on. So tonight, I'm asking that you approve the acceptance of the grant and the awarding, and the matching funds of $107,500, so that we can begin implementing the improvement to the EOC.
Questions for the city manager? City manager, what's the status of our recruitment for the emergency managing?
It is actually out right now. The position has been floated, and I believe we have several applicants already, so.
Very well. Madam Clerk, can we take both of these items together to authorize the acceptance, as well as authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and associated documents?
I believe we can.
Do we have any motion? So moved. Do I have a second?
Baldino seconds.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? 5-0.
Great, thank you. And if you recall, they did, his office did send someone with the big check in September. But we really didn't have the money then, but we have it now.
Big checks are a lie?
Can't deposit it?
I actually think it's in your office.
All the little checks are inside it, you just have to shake it.
The piñata.
Hit it, and $317,000, $1 bills come out. All right, item 17, Fire Department Ladder Truck Replacement Purchase. Well, Chief Avery, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Potem and council members. Tonight, we are going to present our request to replace our ladder truck. I am introducing Battalion Chief Evan Sifki, who's in charge of our apparatus, our fire apparatus, to give you the details of that, of our replacement request. Also, our Finance Director Paul Chung will talk about the financial elements of it, and Ron Griffin, our fleet supervisor, will be here to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Chief Sifki.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem, council. Appreciate the time this evening to discuss the replacement of the ladder truck. A little bit of background on the current ladder truck with regards to the replacement schedule. Our current replacement schedule mimics the NFPA-recommended schedule of total service life of 20 years. 15 years of those would be in frontline status that you see are driving around every day. And then, once a new equipment is purchased, it goes into reserve status for an additional five. So we currently have two frontline engines and a frontline truck with no reserve truck, and we have two reserve engines currently. So the, as part of the accreditation process that we began, a community risk assessment was performed as part of that and was completed. A lot of that information was drawn from NFPA 1710, which discusses deployments depending on the occupancy types and things like that. So the entire city was assessed as far as the type of occupancies that we have currently in the city. And as you know, the city is very dynamic, very unique. We have a combination of low, moderate, high, and maximum risk occupancies in the city of El Segundo. So with that, there are critical tasks, and it breaks out in NFPA 1710, what type of resource you should have based on the occupancy or the risk occupancy. And so by way of an example, a maximum risk occupancy would be the Chevron refinery, or say Park Vista, being a multi-story senior living complex. So those would be considered maximum risk. So it lays out what type of resource you should have based on those occupancies. So the ladder truck plays a critical role in the type of tasks that are performed on, say, a structure fire in one of those occupancies. So currently, we have a 2014 Pierce Aero XT. It's staffed with three firefighters, an engineer who drives the front, a captain with the supervisor, and a tiller operator that drives the back. It is, it's considered what we call a quint, which is basically a ladder truck, but with the addition of a pump, water, and hose. It has a fixed waterway, and so it's considered what we call a quint. The, it's currently 11 years old. If the approval, if the council approvals approves the replacement this evening, it has approximately a four-year build time. So that's why we're here a little bit ahead of schedule, because the build times in the industry lately is anywhere from three to five years to replace. So the build process is approximately about a year, but we have to get in the queue, and so we, in order to start the process. So the industry standard, as I said before, was replacement of 20 years. So one of our neighboring agencies is pushing their equipment replacement schedules to schedule out an additional five years and putting it in reserve status for an additional five. So 15 frontline and 10 in reserve. So that's something that we're considering to look at, considering the cost of these vehicles. So the current ladder truck would be replaced in reserve status for initial, for 10 years instead of five. So one of the challenges that we face right now, when a, the truck goes in for repairs and/or maintenance, we don't have a reserve truck to move our personnel over to maintain service to the community with a truck company. So the challenge with that is, we have to rely on our neighboring agencies, and we have extended response times up to 20 minutes for, say, our next truck company, which would be Redondo Beach, to respond over, to provide that truck service. So that compromises community safety as well as firefighter safety. So some, just a background on kind of what the truck does, for those that don't know, primarily roof access to evacuate smoke and flames from attic spaces and second floors or floors within a structure. That makes the environment more tenable for occupants that might be trapped, and it also allows firefighters to get in to find the seat of the fire, find victims that might be inside. It actually raises the smoke level with inside of a structure. And so that, that's a key role of the truck company on a roof. This was a fire that we had on California Street, and it's a huge responsibility for the truck company personnel. Very dangerous. Elevated rescue operations, so we use, utilize the aerial ladder for high-angle rope rescue. I personally have been on numerous here in town, over at some of our commercial properties, as well as low. If we had a vehicle down into the Hughes Way pit down there, we can utilize the aerial ladder as a, as a point to- If we had a vehicle down into the Hughes Way pit down there, we can utilize the aerial ladder as a, as a point to attach our rope systems. And as well as elevated master streams to suppress fires, and I have a slide that kind of displays that. Some of the specialty operations of the truck, jaws of life, it's what carries all of our auto extrication equipment. Forceable entry and exits on structure fires and different instances, we have to, we have a lot of tools to gain access to properties. Vertical, as I mentioned earlier, and horizontal ventilation, we carry fans and different blowers to evacuate smoke. Specialty operations, all including, including shoring of compromised structures as well as lifting heavy objects with airbags and that sort of thing. So, it's a massive toolbox that we, that we have. Couple of recent incidences, we had a fire on the fourth floor of the Fairfield Inn. Luckily, it was confined to one room, but as you can see, with the aerial ladder's ability, we can get to upper floors for potential rescues if the hallway is untenable and people are trapped on that floor. So, we have the ability to make rescues in elevated locations. Air China, they had a chiller line that for their cooling system ruptured, and they had some structural damage. So, the truck has the ability to get up to the roof and check for structural damage to the roof. Here's the incident from the Lomita fire that we had in twenty-twenty-four. As just kind of a couple of brief videos, you can kind of see the scope of this particular incident from a kind of a far-distance video of it. And so, with the second video, you can see the aerial ladder has a master stream that is applying water from an elevated position. And this would be traditionally a defensive operation where all members are out of the structure, and we are trying to suppress the fire to keep it from extending to adjacent properties. Some recent purchases dating back from twenty-twenty-two into twenty-twenty-four. As you can see, there's a kind of a wide variety of prices depending on the manufacturer, depending on what specific needs the fire department has specified. So, some, it's kind of up to each department, some is preference, some is, you know, they spec it out depending on their needs. As far as ladder truck maintenance, we do have Ron Griffin, our fleet manager, here to discuss. I'm going to introduce the slide, but if you have any additional questions at the end, he's here to answer those questions. Over approximately over the last eleven years, we've spent almost four hundred thousand dollars in maintenance. Comprehensive work performed over the last three years. And that is in, with regards to, we've had axle leaks, a lot of brake issues, and a lot of wear and tear on this particular truck. Some of the contributing factors is truck design and engineering. It being a quint, it's very heavy, and so, that is also contributed to some of the wear and tear on the vehicle. California emissions, unfortunately, we have, we can't get around those. We've had a lot of issues with what they call DPF filters that have to do, it's a component for emissions, where some of our older apparatus do not have those. And so, we've noticed some, some issues with that requiring attention. Some of the past city yard staffing shortages that we've had has resulted in really high third-party vendor costs. Labor rates ranging from freightliner two hundred and forty-five dollars an hour, whereas one of our main outside vendors that we use as performance truck repair is a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, whereas our current fully burden rate within the city, our city mechanics is forty to sixty-six dollars an hour. So, now that they're upstaffed and they're sending people to fire mechanic school, hopefully where that's going to alleviate a lot of the repair costs so we can do a lot more in-house, including preventative maintenance. In extended warranty, there is, in the proposal, our proposal, it does have an extended warranty option. After discussions with the fleet manager, he doesn't see the benefit in the cost. I believe it's about seventy-seven thousand dollars for an extended five-year warranty covering chassis, cab, aerial ladder, things like that. But just in, just something to consider, it is in the proposal. I'll bring up Director Chung to discuss the fiscal impact.
Regards to the cost of the ladder, the quote that we received was two million, three hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and nineteen cents. And in order for us to lock in this price, Pierce Manufacturing stated that it needs to be done by January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, or it would go up by one point five percent every quarter, and that equates to a little less than thirty thousand per quarter. On the funding side, we've been setting aside funds since we purchased this ladder truck eleven years ago. And we set aside close to two million, a little less than two million dollars that we've set aside so far for the past eleven years for this replacement. And we also did look into leasing options. They call it a lease-to-purchase option regards to a five-year, seven-year and ten-year term. And I'll go into more specifics on what option I would recommend the city to if we were to move forward in purchasing the vehicle. Regards to our options, at this time, Pierce Manufacturing provides us really two options. First option is to do a prepayment, meaning we paid the whole amount, but they give us a considerable discount, a fourteen percent discount, which equates to three hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars, which at the final price, the purchasing price will come down to one million, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand and forty-nine dollars. And that includes, of course, the sales tax portion. And that's what the city has done historically to benefit from that discount that Pierce provides. Option two is actually pay the whole amount at delivery, which as you've heard, it, it takes four to five years to purchase. But they don't provide a prepayment benefit or discount, which means that we would have to pay the total two million, three hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. The other option or the last option was the lease-to-purchase option that they provide, and that financing is done through PNC Financial. And I've had to reach out to them regards to specifics. They provide a five, five-year, seven-year or a ten-year term, and their interest rates vary. But if we were to opt for a five-year, it'd be five percent, seven would be five point three seven percent, and ten years would be a five point seven eight. And at this point, my analysis shows that if we were to do a lease-to-purchase, it would be probably option five. But even at that point, we will be basically giving the bank our financing amount that we will actually save from prepaying ahead of time. And so, my recommendation to the council, if we were to move forward with the purchase of the ladder, was to do option one and take advantage of the prepayment option. And lastly, being that this item was not in the budget, we would need a budget appropriation from the council tonight. And that concludes our presentation. We're available for any questions.
Council questions and comments?
Paul? You said you need a budget appropriation, but then you also told us you've been saving this. So, the money, the city has the money on hand to pay full price today for this and to take advantage of the fifteen percent.
Yes, we've been setting aside funds, so it's not a direct hit. It's just that we didn't budget for it, so we just need to budget so that we can purchase the vehicle.
Okay, understood, thanks.
Counselor Drew?
Yeah, chief, so I know the, on one of the slides, it mentioned that it's cost us over the past three years roughly a hundred thousand plus in maintenance, right? For the, for the ladder truck, correct?
It's almost four hundred thousand over the last eleven years.
I know, but I looked over the last three years, it's cost a lot more.
Yes, it's really increased over the last three years.
So, when this is out of service, okay, approximately how much time per year is it now out of service to repair?
Our last out-of-service time was over a month because of major issues with our third-party vendor, parts and all of those things. So, our city went without a ladder truck for that long, which is a risk that I personally had major issues with.
Okay, so, in the end, it's something you need.
Yes, sir.
And each kind of minute that we delay, the cost seems to be going up exponentially, or about one and a half percent a month. Is that kind of what it looks like right now?
Every three months, it's one and a half percent, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Council questions, comments?
Just a general process question for me, trying to get caught up. Is there some sort of, I don't know, task force or group of people internally who get together and itemize what the most immediate needs are? And then I would assume that this is at the top of your list.
Absolutely. Chief Sifki heads the apparatus committee, and this is a group of firefighters that are very in rank, but they've been here many years. And they understand the, our assets at risk in the city, and they absolutely did this spec, the truck spec according to the needs of the city.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have one more. The previous truck is, again, I see it was basically a fifteen-year is what kind of Andrew standards were. We're at ten, and we're already having these problems. So, have we identified why it's only at ten that we're having this bigger breakdowns? Was it in, was it part of the build itself? Is it the type of water that's going through the, through the, through the, through the pipes? Because it's obviously, I know you need it, but it's also a little disconcerting that it's at a ten when normally it should be at a fifteen.
Right. We've made a significant operational change with this ladder truck. As Chief Sifki had presented, it's a quint, which has a pump, and you add the weight of the water along with the hose and everything else. And it really adds to the wear and tear of the truck. Brakes, tires, you name it. So, our new design that we all embraced is one without a pump. So, a fire engine now would go with the ladder truck if we were to have another Lomita fire to have an elevated suppression effort on that. So, it'd be much more, it'd be lighter, shorter wheelbase, less maintenance.
Thank you. Counselor Boils?
Yeah, I would just say, if we're going to purchase it, I would be strongly in favor of waiting. I don't know how they can get away with the one, what do they say, one and a half percent? That's six percent compounded per year. For how long? Did they suggest that that price increase would go on in perpetuity?
Yeah, there is no end to it. It's one point five every three months.
Is there only one maker in the space?
No, there are other manufacturers in which we have analyzed.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I just think if you do net present value, it's like one point six million dollars today, and they're offering us one point nine. Barring this increase, it seems absurd. I would suggest we order and use the money later. We need the money now, we didn't even have the budget appropriated. Why not just order it and then pay for it later? Doing the math, it's not worth it to us to spend that money now.
And I absolutely respect that, Councilman Boils. And like we said, we do have the money set aside, just need to be authorized by you if you so approve it.
Yeah, as I understand, we've been saving for this since we ordered the truck because we knew it had a limited shelf life. And we have the funds available today to pay in cash and take a discount, so.
Yes, sir.
I don't know why we would finance it if we wait, it's only going to get more expensive.
Well, but the point is that the value of the money in the future time value money is stronger for us. So, the discount is, is not as significant as the net present value dollars of it today. That's why we could wait and pay for it later, but still order it today.
But I guess what would be the financial benefit of this, right now, you're saving approximately three hundred and twenty thousand dollars if you pay upfront. So, are we suggesting that we take that money, invest it, and then come up with?
Our money earns us, what, what do we get from our treasury, six to seven percent? What are we getting per annum?
I'm sorry, this is the wrong person standing up here.
I mean, discount rate for Calpers is six point five, I think. We're getting six to seven, we would invest that money. My point is, we're six hundred to the good if we wait to pay for it than if we pay for it now.
I understand that perspective, Councilmember. The rates has been coming down, meaning what our rate of investment return, it used to be six, seven. It's slowly creeping down, and as you know, this five-year treasury is at four point, I believe, four point five. So, and it's anticipated to continue to decrease. So, in order to make up that difference and to make up that, let's say we do a five-year lease-to-buy option at five percent, we would have to earn six percent, seven percent on top. That'd be difficult. That's just my honest opinion.
Yeah, even at four percent discount rate, it's one point nine million in today's dollars is my point, so.
Further council questions or comments? Director Chung, and you don't have to get back up, one question for you. Is the equipment replacement fund, has it been fully reimbursed by the GALL fund? Is that loan totally paid back?
Yes.
And we should note that we saved on our last engine replacement because that was donated by Chevron, right? When we, we kicked that down the road, and then as a result of a settlement with the city of Richmond, we received that, so that was nine hundred thousand to the positive. So, the equipment replacement fund is in rude health. I would ask this, though, the overwhelming majority of wear and tear on these vehicles is brakes, right? Brakes and suspension, it's very, very heavy. I mean, this, this one is way too heavy, obviously. We over-engineered this one. In four years, we have asked why, I mean, we understand why we need a ladder in the city. We don't fully understand why we need to roll a ladder every time there's a car wreck or my child dislocates their elbow. Have we looked at any hybrid vehicles, multi-role vehicles that we can roll instead that won't have the wear and tear on this? So, would we could roll to a ladder required, there's a structure fire, there's something that's elevated, and we could send this thing out. But if there's just a routine traffic accident, there's certainly plenty of multi-role vehicles in the market for those things that require less maintenance. And because their weight, curb weight is less, there's less wear and tear. I mean, this thing is all brakes.
And I respect that, Mayor. Our issue is that we have limited funds just for the ladder truck as we speak now. We will absolutely look for a utility vehicle to meet the lesser need, if you will. But our firefighters are well-trained in vehicle extrication, as you saw, and many times, we don't know what the gravity of the situation is until we even get there. So, if it, if it calls for the jaws of life and heavy extrication tools and shoring and everything else that it may encounter, even having a utility vehicle may be the wrong vehicle if we don't roll the ladder truck right away.
I would just wonder the number of times that this thing deploys, the number of times any of its assets are used besides its wheels to get people there. And I think that there is a cost differential in there. I know that last time we came forward with a vehicle replacement, right, we looked at a tactical ambulance, and that was three hundred some thousand dollars. But certainly, that had all the whistles and bells, and for, you know, three hundred thousand dollars, let's double that. For six hundred thousand dollars, we could get somebody that would save us, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year in maintenance because it's curb weight. And I've, I have seen the load on this current ladder truck, and it is, it is pretty impressive. I mean, you can't, right, you can't fill it up with water and roll it.
And we've decommissioned that and the water, so it would be lighter, the maintenance will be less for the next five years operationally.
And I understand the, that one, we're going to re-engineer so it's a slightly smaller vehicle. But I think, you know, this, this is, I suspect that this, that we're going to buy this truck, we haven't voted yet, but I suspect we're going to buy this. I would say that with that comes a but. You know, when one, the next engine comes up at the end of its service life, if that, it would behoove us to have a multi-role vehicle alternative in there, that we could say, this is something that we can drive out here that is a little more mission pertinent than a, I mean, the full, this is the Swiss Army knife that you can't fit in your pocket, right? And that's not, that's not always super useful for us.
And we will look at all options and present that to you.
That is my, my soapbox moment. With that, is there any further discussion, or would anyone like to move to waive the competitive bidding and then authorize the city manager a designated consultation with the city to execute an associated agreement?
Do we got to go on the options as well, or what's, what are we doing there?
We can, you can move with which, whatever moves you.
I would like, I would like to move approval of the purchase with option one, meaning the prepay and take the discount in hand.
Baldino seconds.
All right, I'll take a vote. All in favor? Aye, aye. All opposed? No. Boils, no. For one, that passes. Now, I will take a motion to authorize the city manager a designated consultation with the city attorney to execute the associated agreements or documentation to effect the purchase. So moved.
Keldar, second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Five oh on the authorization. All right, thank you very much, chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
In four years, we will all get to ride the truck. By the way, are you guys going to do the, the operational day where you light us all on fire and make us work the chainsaw and all that stuff?
Absolutely. We're planning it now, and it would be great to have you out there.
So, start training now. That stuff looks heavy.
I heard it's a competition.
It is always a competition. All right, item seven hundred four? Item eighteen, cultural development program review.
Okay, let me just make sure this is on, wait, on this way. Okay.
We're at the halfway mark.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Pimentel, Mayor Potem Baldino and members of the city council. Tonight, I will present an overview of the city's cultural development fund, also known as the one percent for the arts program. In two thousand and nineteen, the city council established a one percent for arts fee that applies to commercial or industrial projects with construction costs of two million dollars or more. The code requires that developers constructing projects with a valuation of two million dollars or more must contribute one percent of the total cost of the project for arts by either commissioning public art on-site or by contributing equal dollars into CDP fund. The program is under the supervision of a full-time cultural arts coordinator who is assigned to the recreation parks and library department. The cultural arts coordinator manages the public art on-site review and approval process, the oversight of the city's arts and culture committee and the CDP fund. Parameters for use of the CDP funds are set forth in municipal code fifteen thirty-four. Parameters for use of the CDP funds are set forth in municipal code fifteen thirty-four. CDB, CDP funds may be used as follows: for the design, acquisition, commission, installation, improvement, relocation, maintenance, conservation, restoration, utility charges, and insurance of artwork; to support, to sponsor or support artistic or cultural services; and for the costs, the city costs of administering the fund and associated programs. The cultural arts coordinator works with the ACC to develop a proposed annual budget that is presented to the city council during the budget process. The current guidelines state that the council will approve the annual budget and any expenditures over fifty thousand, but not individual projects or programs. While the majority of CDP funds are used for personnel costs and public art and city-sponsored programs, the ACC also allocates funding to local nonprofit and community groups through a small grants program. Applicants seeking funds for cultural or artistic programs or events must submit an application to the ACC, which is then reviewed and evaluated based on criteria outlined in a scorecard, similar to that of the scorecard that the city council uses to utilize and, uh, utilizes to waive special event fees. Currently, the maximum grant funding amount allowed per applicant is six thousand dollars. In discussing the components of the El Segundo percent for the arts program back in November twenty twenty-four, staff were asked to research other municipalities to provide the council with information relative to how other cities operate their percent for the arts fund. As you can see on the chart above, staff researched seven other programs to create this comparative analysis, which shows that the city of El Segundo is the most business-friendly by having a much higher trigger than all of the other six agencies. Additionally, the El Segundo program only applies to commercial development, while five other agencies include residential development. I'm actually going to skip this slide and come back to it. This slide shows the in-loue payments made to date and also the projected in-loue payments for twenty-four, twenty-five. It is important to note that estimations for twenty-four, twenty-five are dependent on if, on if all anticipated projects move forward from the initial permitting process into actual development. To date, over one point eight million dollars has been paid into the CDP fund. For a more detailed look at the program's expenses and revenue, please refer to the documents attached to your packet. This slide shows that over seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in public art has been, has been commissioned on-site at a variety of El Segundo businesses and corporations, with an additional eight hundred and four thousand potentially to be completed in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Again, this is dependent on all of these projects moving forward from initial permitting into development. This slide shows the eight onsite art projects that have been installed around the community, with the most recent project being completed at the Embassy Suites on Imperial Avenue. The city also has commissioned art murals at the public library and recently completed the monument sign at Imperial and Main. Funding has also been set aside for art components at the plunge and the teen center renovation. While public art pieces are one component of the CDP program, the programming initiatives are another critical component. The funding is allocated annually through the budget process and is then utilized to fund multiple, multiple cultural or, and artistic objectives. So some of the, uh, examples include the Visual Artists Working in Community Program, um, which you may remember sponsored a community banner project in which residents gathered with the poet laureate to create, uh, banners that were hung on Main Street reflecting the theme of "I Remember, I Wish." Uh, we also fund a poet laureate annually, and that poet laureate, um, commissions poetry workshops, other activities with the community, and we've done those over at the high school as well. And in two thousand and twenty-four, they, the community poets, along with the poet laureate, published an anthology called Wordmongers. We also utilize the funds for cultural excursions, um, typically for seniors. We've done a couple of excursions to, um, various art or cultural institutions around Los Angeles. But we're also proposing, uh, a student excursion for students at Richmond and Center Street Elementary School, their fourth grade students, um, to attend a pueblo historical monument in spring of two thousand and twenty-five. We also fund the community of, the Festival of Holidays, which, as you all know, is a community event that celebrates five holidays: Hanukkah, Christmas, Kwanzaa, Amysoka, Noche Buena. We've been doing this for about four years now, and we do this right around the holidays, um, in conjunction with the tree lighting and toy giveaway. And then, as I mentioned, uh, the pro, the funds do support a community engagement fund, um, which supports the grant program, which recently has funded the Juneteenth Festival in Gundo Pride, but also other public art pieces around the community, such as artist Lindsay Karen's, uh, mural in the library, the Garden of El Segundo. And then last, uh, the, the CDP funds are allocated towards a sponsorship for the El Segundo Art Walk annually. And this, again, is just some samples of other programs, uh, that the funding has sponsored over the last few years. Um, we've done a number of musical, uh, events, but also poetry. These are a couple of the art pieces around town. Uh, on the top, uh, almost to the end, right there, that's the art, the mural I was referencing a few moments ago that's over at the library. Uh, but we've also done art workshops for teens, and then obviously our public art collection is growing. So the cultural arts coordinator recently resigned his position to take a position in a nearby municipality, but prior to his departure, he drafted a cultural arts master plan at the request of the council. The draft document is complete and will be presented to the ACC at their next regularly scheduled meeting on January twenty-eighth. I'm going to go back. Oh, I missed it, sorry. There we go. Now, as I conclude my presentation, I'd like to highlight several items for the council to consider as we move the CDP into the future. Staff will benefit from clear direction from the council on each of these proposed discussion items, and all of these items are things that have been brought up. We've had several conversations about the one percent for the arts in the past year, and, um, during those conversations, these are sort of the, the themes that continue to rise to the top, um, and we would benefit.
What conversations are you talking about?
The meetings here.
Okay, go on.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as direction from council?
No direction.
Okay.
Just, you know, things that have been discussed or questions that have come up. Um, so those are, I've, I've listed them out for you. You don't have to consider them. You can add others, um, but at this point, we would love to get further direction from the council.
The, um, master plan?
Yes.
That wasn't included in our packet. You said it's finished, it's going to go to ACC.
The draft is going to go to the ACC first, and then we'll bring it to the council.
Okay.
Council questions?
I have a question. What, um, have we solicited feedback from the business community? To what extent, I should say?
I'll, I'll let Michael answer that question.
Uh, council, there, there hasn't been a formal solicitation. We did not do active, you know, mail, mailer or inquiry, um, you know, during the last council discussion in November, it was raised, uh, to, to identify if there's been any trend on impacts to developments, um, that we did not observe. And, and, I mean, it's, it's anecdotal, but in at least the last three years that I've been here, I know the program's been up and running since two thousand and nineteen. There hasn't been any sentiment shared, said, hey, we were going to develop here and we're walking away because of this one fee. There's so many different elements that go into, you know, somebody choosing to develop or expand or improve their existing spaces. Um, anecdotally, from my personal experience here, there hasn't been any noted or pointed cause at the one percent fee that any developers have said, hey, we're not, we're not doing RTI, we're not developing, we're not expanding because of this one thing, um, at, at this time. But there was no proactive, specific outreach generated alone because of the, the, you know, seeking feedback on one percent, at least within the last couple of months, there hasn't been.
I just know from those that have paid, I've heard from them personally. I don't know if Chris has, but when I was mayor, I heard from some of these that paid. One of them, um, one of the longest-standing corporations in El Segundo. So, um, several, several of them. I don't, this isn't like a one-off kind of situation, so.
Yeah, I, I certainly got an, an earful for not, I mean, they were already locked into their, to their structure, uh, but it was certainly imposing a, a burden on their operational costs. You know, I, I would, I mean, I think we're kind of glossing over the, the entire breadth of this, but it, I was surprised to see how many cities do not cap this. I mean, I, I was, toured the Intuit Dome, uh, and that is, I mean, they have art everywhere, uh, and they're very happy about it. I mean, at least they're smiling, it tells you they're happy about it. There are art everywhere because wholly uncapped on, you know, a billion-dollar development. I think that, that, you know, our developments are smaller, obviously, than, than a twenty-thousand seat basketball stadium, but an uncapped number to me on this seems like it could be onerous, and if somebody came in with a, a, a particularly sophisticated project, it wouldn't even have to have a huge amount of square footage, but a certain amount of sophistication, uh, and we could impose a three-million-dollar piece of art on them, uh, that just doesn't, I mean, if this is a classic, like, feel, you know, it's a feel thing, not a, there's not a rational point here, but it just doesn't feel like the kind of way we would do business.
Um, I just want to bring up, sorry.
Please, go ahead.
So I actually thought the reason why this came up in discussion, I wasn't at the last meeting, and it was agendas, was because we were getting a lot of feedback that this was a problem. So I haven't received anything, and I know you said you talked, but I, I haven't seen anything. So I would, I would expect there to be business owners or people in here right now to discuss this, if this was indeed impacting or at least making them think twice about bringing business here. And the other thing is, is if I pull up that slide correctly, did you say there's one million or one point eight million that's already been paid in?
Yes.
And there's eight hundred thousand that is going to be on-site?
Potentially.
So you're talking potential two point six in one year? I mean, doesn't that number kind of tell us that there's not a barrier? I mean, I, I, I would expect if it was at zero a couple of years in a row and people just weren't doing it.
Right.
But I, I, I just, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what we're, what we're trying to get to here. Are, are we trying to get to, we got so many complaints that we need to do something about it, or, you know, Chris, you mentioned a big, huge development that might be, come in and be X, Y, and Z. We can also account for that. If someone comes in and says, hey, listen, I would like to put this gigantic thing here, I need you to help me out on this fee, I'm pretty sure we would be willing to talk about that. Um, I just don't currently see the, the rationale based on the information you've shared to adjust it now. If we want to talk about, if there's a question about how we're using the money and, you know, how that's allocated, in the end, we, I think, authorize everything except for the small grants, right? I think the small grants is done by the, uh, by the ACC.
Well, and individual art, individual projects, we don't typically bring.
No, but we, we authorize the funding.
Correct, every year, annually.
Right. So then, even on the small grant piece, percentage of the total budget for the year, is it, is it twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars a year?
It's, you know, three hundred thousand dollar budget, and they give, they gave, I think, twelve thousand doll, no, six thousand, six hundred in grants last year?
Okay.
Six thousand, six hundred, seventy-five.
Okay.
I mean, not, we're not including the Art Walk in that, of course. It's a little bit of a separate.
But again, we vote on that and we say yes.
Correct.
I'm talking, there's certain things, there's certain discretion, I think, that the ACC has to, on, on, on some small pieces that come up.
Sure.
Because things might come up and they want to be able, and we, we also agreed to allow them to do that.
Right.
So I guess that's the, is I'm trying to, what are we trying to get to here?
Well, and, and I do want to mention, too, that any expenditure over fifty thousand, we would still have to bring to the council, um, but yes.
Okay. I think it's a fundamental philosophy. Do you believe government is good at effectively taxing people and then deciding what to spend it on, especially when it's something subjective as art? So if you tend to believe that, then of course you'd support that. If you think, wow, that's the last thing government should be doing, then you wouldn't support it. And then I could look down this list and name names, but there have been several companies on this list that you know that mentions something. The reason they don't come to the chamber is because it's uncomfortable. These people are doing business here, they're not going to be like, you guys are terrible, let me tell you why, in a public forum. They're going to go to the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and say, wow, yeah, I'm glad you're touring this facility, let's talk about that one percent for the arts fee. And Beach Cities Media is three quarters of a million dollars. That's CDC developing that in a joint venture, I think, with Boston Properties still. I mean, does, is that a reasonable number? Three quarters of a million dollars to build a property as a tax? That's what I would ask you. That, and to your point, mayor, about a cap, to me, that just seems absolutely outlandish. It's already difficult to get projects on the pencil. You know that, council member Keldorf, because you do it for a living. And then we're adding another financial burden on them that some cities are not adding. And even if they were, as was stated earlier, that's not something we necessarily need to do. So fundamentally, I've always had a problem with this, um, program. I think it's an absolute deterrent to getting new business because these costs just get passed down to the tenants. Someone pays for it.
I, I, I would just add that, that when we pass this, and I know we talked about it at the December meeting, that we, in both meetings building up, that you recounted the December meeting, we talked about there being a cap, and we just, it just never came to fruition, like it wasn't sort of intended to be in there. Uh, so I think that that's baked into the genesis of it. And, and there, no doubt, there is griping, and no one wants to be the one to show up here in, in, in the city council and say that, that I'm the unhappy developer because they know they want to ask us for things later and not, not make us mad. Um, I mean, that's, I mean.
I mean, with respect, I, there are some developers who haven't had a hard time showing up at Planning Commission and complaining about development impact fees and, and other items, so I, it didn't come up. It hasn't come up as one of the issues since two thousand and nineteen, when I was on Planning Commission. Doesn't mean there aren't murmurings about it, for sure, but nobody showed up and commented on it.
And, and I am, I'm curious about, is one of these proposals the idea that if you owe a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the project, you could build a four hundred thousand dollar statue and then pay three fifty in, but you can't currently do that?
Right.
It's one of the other.
Right.
I mean, that would seem to be a sensible modification.
We could add that as a modification.
And one question might be more for Michael than for you.
Sure.
It's intentional, these are commercial projects, so I don't think that we had mixed-use projects approved maybe when this came to fruition. So the projects that we have currently, like, uh, Pacific Coast Commons, because of the residential component, it does not apply to them.
It, it would not apply to the residential component. Pacific Coast Commons was subject to this fee, but Pacific Coast Commons, I think, to an earlier point, also had a development agreement that was negotiated outside of our fee structure at the time. And so Pacific Coast Commons had locked in a different fee structure, um, than the other development impact fees, including this, this, uh, cultural development program fee.
So going forward, it would apply to the commercial, the ground floor, commercial buildup.
That's right.
Got it. Thank you.
If there was no development agreement.
Right.
Right. If they're just coming, doing everything per code, they don't need any special favors or any zone use modifications, then yeah, it would apply. Um, I, I don't see any reason to stop this program. I, I like the program. I, in my time at Planning Commission and here, I, I don't think it's stopped people from developing in town. If there are tweaks to be made, I'm, I'm all for looking at that and revising it, but I don't think that's a program that, that we should be getting rid of by any means.
Further council comments?
I would like to talk, I do think that there is potential to split the payment. I mean, somebody might not want to install four hundred thousand dollars worth of art on-site, so that's a modification that I'm open to if others are.
So that would be the allowing an option to provide art on-site and pay the difference in the fee? Okay. You could make that change to the guideline.
I think you have consensus on that.
Do we have consensus to receive and file first?
Sure.
To receive and file? All right, now, now let's talk through mod, potential modifications. So is, do we have, we don't have to move, do we have broad consensus on that item? Allowing the, the, to have an on-site, or split it onsite and pay the difference in a fee?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to interject, so most of these parameters are baked into the ordinance, so it would require an ordinance to revise.
All right.
Just mechanically.
We will come up with an ordinance at the end of this. Do we have a stenographer? Type as we go. Are there any other modifications that we'd like to see?
Yeah, I'd love to see a cap of 250,000.
I would not agree to that. I think that's too low.
Is there any support for a $250,000 cap besides Councilmember Boyle, excuse me? Can I suggest a cap at $1 million?
What?
Just to, just to put a high side out there. I just can't imagine us obligating someone to spend a million dollars on art on development.
No, I would agree, that's, it seems a bit much once you cross the million-dollar threshold.
You would have my support on that.
Are there any other modifications at this time?
I question if we need a full-time individual to run this committee, because that salary comes out of these funds.
Correct.
So now that we have an opening, can we look at maybe rethinking what the obligations are, if we have a business plan or...
Master plan.
Implementations, whatever it is. I mean, and I'm not on this committee, I haven't rolled up my sleeves to figure out what's what, but I just can't, I got to imagine we could be a little more efficient staff-wise, hiring someone else, depending on the needs of what this committee meets, and as far as meeting with developers. And another crazy idea, I'm just throwing it out there, this program might be better situated under Michael Allen's department, and then, totally off-topic, I would like to see Park Vista kind of moved over to your department. So I don't know if I can switch balls around like that, but I'm not going to get consensus on that, I'm just throwing it out there. So these are just comments, thoughts, food for thought going forward on this. If we could, we could figure out the staffing a little bit better. I just, when we approve the budget, I get heartburn thinking, how much is going to a full-time salary for this?
Okay.
I agree with Ryan on the potentially moving it over to Michael's shop, only because that's where the connection is between understanding when people are putting developments or considering development, and be able to have conversations about whether to do onsite or what you could do for the city, that kind of thing. So however that is, I do think that makes a little bit more sense, to be honest with you, because that seems to be where the conduit is.
City manager, can you weigh in on that organization structure?
Actually, Director Mancini and I have had discussions, now that the position is open, in terms of the, you know, how much, do we need a full-time person? And we have already started those discussions, and no final decisions yet, but we have had those discussions.
Okay.
As well as discussions about moving pieces of this over to the community development department.
I would think if it moved over to community development, it would be a challenge, for the programming piece, I think that really makes sense to stay in our shop, the programming, if we're going to continue doing that. I don't know, you know, but we can certainly talk about that. I know you wanted to speak about it.
You both would know much better than I.
Are you challenging the artistic sensibility of Michael Allen?
No.
Look at those socks!
He just wants to get rid of the Park Vista, give it to me.
Those are Mark Rocco-inspired sock patterns, block colors.
Yeah, I think we can look at this, we have some other staffing stuff in the department, so we're kind of taking a little bit of a, more of a holistic look, and we may be able to, I want to make the most sense of this, but yeah, I certainly can't do it on my own.
Sure.
But...
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed, you need help.
It's not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing.
Yeah.
One moment, one moment, would we like to have the ACC weigh in on this?
Certainly.
Chair Pikafer.
Thank you, yes, I'm the chair of the Arts and Culture Committee, and I definitely understand that discussion that's happening right now, particularly on the development side of things, moving that over to community development with the interfacing with developers. But like Director Mancini was saying, there is a total other part of this job in programming that has brought a lot of things in, that I think probably could be continued in some way. But a lot of this came, a lot of new things may not come out of it. The poet laureate program, I think we're going to continue that by moving it to the library. But there's just so much potential that comes out of this committee that brings new things to the community that would be missing, the Festival of Holidays, the poet laureate, like I said, and other artists in residencies programs that we have. And also, I think we're just putting the cart a little bit before the horse on this point, in that the master plan that the outgoing coordinator did, in a very short period of time, I'll add, outlines what the committee could do, what has the potential to do, and it really is dependent on that staff person. And the committee as a whole, which will have five new members as of our next meeting on Tuesday, has not had a chance to review that. So again, I certainly understand the sentiment, but I think we should evaluate that master plan as a committee, and come back here again at a later date and present our recommendations on those points, at what this position could look like, and splitting the role of, well, not the role, the responsibilities across two different departments. So that's all I would add to that point.
Thank you, Mr. Pikafer.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just as far as the variables, and, and just to telegraph something that will be coming to you as far as building fees in the future, as far as the lever, the tweak we can make on timing, currently, the ordinance requires the payment of in-lu fees just to get a building permit. So that's something that could be changed to, you can pull a permit, but you have to pay the fee by CFO. So there's, it gives them time to, you know, cash flow, things of that sort.
Does that sound reasonable?
That sounds completely reasonable.
That sounds very reasonable to me. Okay, that'll be our third modification.
Thanks for bringing that up.
The split, the million-dollar cap, and the timing of the payment. Any other modifications? All right, city attorney, is your stenographer ready for this new ordinance?
Yes, so we can, we can come on February 4th with something for first reading. And just to recap, we have the mix of in-lu with art, as far as meaning that value, million-dollar threshold on the in-lu fee, and the timing getting pushed for, someone can pull a building permit, but has to pay the fee by CFO.
And so that'll be ready for his first reading on February 4th.
Correct.
But we'll have a little more time to talk about the staffing. Okay, just want to make sure I'm bringing that back on February 4th.
I would use erasable pen for February 4th, I have a feeling we're not done.
Great.
Just saying.
Yes.
We just set policy, we expect you guys to implement it, no matter how incoherent we are up here. It's still, the burden falls on you to make it work, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah. It all looks coherent if you look from far enough away.
It's almost.
That's the important part.
It's a matter of art.
All right, that's right, it's a matter of art, it's a matter of art.
And I guess, just to clarify, council, one of the components of the ordinance right now is having the ACC review applications for public art proposals. Are you comfortable with coming back with those three points now, or do you want to put a pin in it until we get further direction regarding other changes that might come about?
Are we going to see a further presentation on that process at the next, the next meeting?
Which, sorry, which process are we talking about?
The process by which different art pieces are approved or programs are approved.
We don't, we have no plans to change that process.
Okay.
I think we should look at, because I don't think we have up here, and it's fairly tedious.
Yeah, I think there's also a bit of, to Councilmember Boyle's point, there's a point of feedback that we also get, that it's an opaque and challenging process to go through.
Okay.
In fairness, also, we have people that say, yeah, it was super straightforward. So I mean, there's two sides to that.
Sure.
But I think we can move ahead with the ordinance, but I also think, as this comes forward, we'd want to look at that as well.
Sure, we can do that.
So we do that on February 4th?
Not on February 4th.
On February 4th.
That would be tomorrow.
We can do yours on February 4th, yours is going to need more time.
Understood, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Item 20, a resolution confirming rules and regulations in City Manager Administrative Order Number 1 to address Los Angeles County fire-related emergencies. City Attorney, you are on the spot again.
All right, so how we got here, of course, we had several fires starting on January 7th, including fires in Pacific Palisades, Eaton Fire around Altadena, Pasadena. The same day, we had Governor proclamation of a state of emergency, and the county board chair issued an analogous declaration of state of local emergency. A few days later, the county Department of Health and Human Services issued a declaration of public health emergency. On January 14th, City Manager issued Administrative Order Number 1 to address local county fire-related emergencies. And such an order from the City Manager requires City Council confirmation. And what does the City Manager order do? Suspend street-sweeping regulations through last Friday, January 17th. It suspends various parking and vehicle habitation restrictions for 30 days through midnight February 13th, through single-family resident host city issued permit at no fee to allow hosting of displaced individuals, RV, on or adjacent to the host's property with certain use restrictions. It also suspends the bar on home sharing and short-term rentals for 90 days through midnight of April 14th, through a no-fee city permit to provide housing for displaced persons. It also suspends collection of TOT, Transit Occupancy Tax, for displaced persons occupying a room in an extended-stay hotel motel for 90 days through midnight of April 14th. And I think so far, at least as of this morning, there have not been any applications for the home sharing or the RV vehicle hosting. And what constitutes a displaced person? The person's primary residence has been destroyed or rendered inhabitable or inaccessible by the fires, or the person's primary residence is located in an area subject to a mandatory evacuation order or an evacuation warning. And the recommendation is to adopt a resolution confirming the City Manager's Resolution, I'm sorry, Administrative Order Number 1. Feelable if you have any questions, thank you.
Questions for the City Attorney?
Cash, I do, go back to, I guess, probably three, the last one.
Yeah.
How are, who, is that basically the extended stay next to Ralph's? Is that basically what we're talking about there?
I believe there are two, two hotels, motels that qualify for that.
There's a Hyatt House that has a kitchen, too.
Yeah, so, so I would know that...
And the Hyatt House, okay. So I guess my question is, how do we know, who, I mean, who's actually policing this, for lack of a better term?
There's a, there's a component of, for lack of a better term, scouts' honor there, but the, the idea...
So in other words, there isn't one.
But the, the, the point where there's verification is that every quarter, TOT tax has to be paid, and there's a, there's a quarterly report that TOT, folks that are obligated to pay TOT sent to the city. So that necessarily needs to include the evidence of displacement, the amount of time, the transient stayed there, that would have to be provided in the next quarterly report following the stay. But all of that, all of the intake, as opposed to the RV and the, I guess the RV, for example, which is done by city staff, this is done by the hotel operator, because they're in the position, because they calculate the TOT, intake that, and then provide it to the city when it provides this mandatory quarterly report.
Yeah, so we'd be able to look at it, sit there and say, okay, wow, geez, you know, you're way off of last year, so you apparently had a bunch of people from the Palisades there. In other words, you just don't want them to take advantage of a situation, that's all. So the mechanism is, you're going to have to compare it to LY numbers, basically.
And there's, they necessarily need to provide, if they did have any, any folks that were displaced, they have to have the evidence of displacement and et cetera included with the report.
Got you. All right, thank you.
Further questions? Can I ask, is there a way to do a check-in on this? You know, in 30 days when the RV one ends, if we, if no one's using it, you know, if the extended stays aren't asking for it, and if we're not getting requests for these, then I think we should roll it up early, just for simplicity's sake, you know, it's, it's...
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think we're looking at the meeting on February 20th?
Yeah, February 20th, just a check-in on it. If there's no uptake, then I would rather get complexity out of our regulatory environment. Okay. All right, can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Baldino, so moves?
Jeru, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. All right. And me, number 21, our appointments to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee and the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. So this is, once again, something that our culture of volunteerism and service in the city, where people dedicate their time to this, they come in, they go through an interview process, and we point them to the committees. And so I'd like to both announce and thank those individuals. So for the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, we have Elizabeth Kennedy, Michelle Leach, Jason Halfley, Nicole Lasaso, and Stuart Carroll, all joining for terms that will expire June 30, 2027, except Elizabeth, whose is June 30, 2026. And then Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, we have Crista Bellvianni, coming back one more time after dedicating half of her life to Little League, Emily Atmore, and Alison Mitrovic. So thank you to them for putting their time to this, it is oftentimes thankless work, and it is incredibly important to the way that we operate, especially in those two groups, which are some of our newest and most ambiguous in form that they give shape to. So thank you very much. And with that, we will go to reports.
I'll comment on that one. I actually want to discuss potentially looking at, or considering, putting DEI on a quarterly meeting, and let me give you a little bit of background as to why on that, it's a great committee. There's always been a lot of additions and subtractions from that committee. I know they're working on their work plan at this point in time. They also have subcommittees, so this would not preclude the subcommittees from meeting whenever they want. But it, I do not believe, and Ms. Mancini, please tell me if I'm wrong, that I think they're struggling to find enough things on their agendas to do a monthly meeting at this point in time.
I'll say that I think the work that they are doing could more effectively be done in, during subcommittee work. I know we've had a really difficult time with getting members of the school district, not because they don't want to be there, they're wonderful, but it's very difficult. And so Ms. Janasek did, did say, mention to the group, is, you know, could we go quarterly? As long as they can still do their subcommittee work...
Yeah, again, it's just that I know it's staff time, it's difficult to get a quorum. I think a quarterly would allow them to get a quorum. And let's, I'm just saying, why don't we test it out for a year and see if, does that help it, does it hurt it? If we come back 12 months from now and sit there and say this is a bad idea, then we can always adjust it. I just think it might help the process.
City Attorney, this is not agendized, can we take this action?
No, can we put on the next agenda?
I just want to make sure process-wise, we do this right.
Yeah, so it should come back, future agenda, and also, Director Mancini can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there is a pending DEI committee presentation.
In fact, February 4th.
February 4th.
Okay, perfect.
Where they will also be presenting their own work changes to the bylaws and their work plan. But I think it might be a good...
Because I think if we can fit that in there, if we can get this schedule built in, I think it's a very good idea.
We can do that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, reports. City Clerk?
We have a report.
We insist on a report from the City Clerk. Come up with something, just make it up, just make it up.
I would really like to thank everybody at City Hall for welcoming me. I've gotten just the warmest welcome, and I really appreciate everybody's patience as I step into this new job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Treasurer, Finance Director, Treasurer, any report? Very well, we may have to figure out how to do that one in the future. My invisible friend, the City Treasurer. Councilmember Keldorf?
Oh, first, again. Let's see, a huge debt of gratitude to our first responders. I know our Elskendo Fire Department has had two teams in Palisades for over a week, and our police department has had a team patrolling night shifts in Altadena. And so many members of the community have asked me how to help them, and every time that question comes up, they in turn give me some information on a donation that they are running, organizing, and ways to help others. So thank you so much, it's very appreciated. One comment, I don't know where this fits in, but going back to like hours ago, what Ms. Russ Musson brought up about a subcommittee for the Olympics. I know we have 22, 23 committees on here, but I do think it's worth discussing that at some point, we add another one. That, only because, again, several community members who have expertise in areas of transportation and working with LAX have brought it up. So I think it's something that makes sense to me, would love to talk about it wherever appropriate.
Very well. Councilmember Jeru?
Nothing for me this evening.
Councilmember Boils?
No.
Nothing? Mayor Pro Tem?
No report.
All right, well, that gives me a few things. I will start with the draft council assignments, and these may not be permanent, but I have an idea that I'll throw at you too for the major events, as I blow up my font here. Do I need to read through these assignments, or this is just read into the record? City Attorney, is it okay to just, it's in the report? I mean, I don't have to...
Yeah.
Read off everybody's spot. We may do a move on aquatics, and I would say that part of my concept of adding economic development, which Councilmember Boils excels at, is more... development, which Councilmember Boyle excels at, is maybe part of that as it interfaces, my concept for that is that it's sort of the old EDAC kind of function, and maybe part of that is maybe major events play into that, because it has the same people in theory you'd be interfacing with, both in terms of hospitality, transportation, logistics, I don't know, we can mull that through. As far as other reports, since thankfully I don't have to read this Times New Roman 8 table, we had 30-odd Ukrainian defense innovators in town on short notice, certainly the deputy city manager played a huge role, as did our friends over at DTI in hosting them, these people came in with, I mean, real-world tested items, and part of their proposition was, hey, we've got things that we could put onto the battlefield, and you guys have things that you're developing, trying to figure out how it works on the battlefield, maybe we could meet and speak to these people. Some of their innovations, I mean, when you hear someone who's actually, you know, come directly from using it, is a, were pretty revelatory, but it was a tremendous meeting, it was hosted through Stanford, a former Stanford SRI brought them down here, and it was a tremendous afternoon, both the chiefs presented, and I think one thing that struck me was, people coming from Eastern Europe were asking all these questions that we finally realized it's really hard to do business over there. Like, they expected the fire chief to have 7,000 permits he needed for someone to start a business, which presumably comes with a ton of graft, and I was like, no, you just show up and, do you have plans? You know, is what you're using going to blow up? If it is, you know, you can't. And it was a tremendous meeting. I got to tour the new Intuit Dome, and on background on that, we have played a role in the city in trying to figure out the transportation plans in and out of the stadium and entertainment complex in Inglewood as it runs through us. Certainly those stadium owners had significant opinions on it, and part of it was, you know, no one ever seen the Intuit Dome, so I got to go and see how that's built in, how it's structured, what the transportation plan looks like, and thank you to Jennifer Lewis, who's the general counsel over there who hosted for that. COG Transportation this month, we did not have a quorum, which is incredibly disappointing because we were going to fill out the, or flesh out all of the matching funds for major Measure R and Measure M projects, so these are 150, 200 million dollar projects, and no one showed up to vote on how to allocate it, which was disappointing. I was hoping we'd have a quorum so I could just allocate it to us, but, you know, just a small quorum, but we did not, so that will get moved to next month where everyone will fight over it. Sanitation similarly, very little occurred, we have sanitation personnel meeting tomorrow, what's important for us is we will talk about the $36 million judgment against LA County sanitation, which should be paid out of its reserves, it's not going to be a special assessment, but we may be out of appeals on that. There will be the sale of the South Bay Fiber Network or the sale of the implementation or operation of South Bay Fiber, we may get a presentation on that from a COG member to explain how the process works. I mean, we'll need it, because the people who presented at the COG were engineers who presented in a way that someone who is consuming fiber technology, or fiber-based technology, would not intuitively understand.
They, excuse me, Mayor, they did present that at the city managers, South Bay City Managers Group last week, I mean, I can invite them to a future meeting if you'd like.
If they could bring charts, that would really help, and maybe animation, because this guy, I mean, I think I'm pretty good, and he lost me early, like, early, early. And it's a lot of money, and the South Bay Fiber Ring is an important innovation that we have here, and the idea of them being, as I understood, a middle-mile provider, not last mile retail, but middle-mile provider of the service, both for, you know, cities like us who are already wired in, it's not as big a deal, cities like Pedro, that's a big deal, and why Pedro matters to us is that's Fort MacArthur, where all our base housing is for the base, so that's a huge problem for the base, they cannot do a lot of secured communication from down there, just because they don't have fiber access. So there is a role for us in that. And lastly, we're invited to participate in the High School Civics Project on the economics of inequality, they had four or five multimedia projects there, it was very interesting, very interesting to see.
It was, you realize how far high schools come, really, in the last 30 years.
Yeah. I was delighted to be there. All right, and that's all, I think. We have, anything else, City Attorney?
I think it's time.
City Manager?
Yes, just a real quick Hyperion update, which I haven't done in a month now. Last week, we had an interesting Zoom meeting with a company called Source Technologies from Back East, it's a company that has created this enzyme product that they've utilized in wastewater treatment plants back east that supposedly eliminates odors. And so Dr. Stenstrom and his sub-con consultant Elias and I met with them for quite a while, understood a lot of technical questions, long story short, is they are going to provide us with a kind of a proposal and potential cost estimates that we can take back to Hyperion for consideration. So it kind of fell out of the, literally out of the sky, there was a doctor from Back East that was flying to California that saw the LA Times article and so forth, so it sounded interesting, and it seems like it's a product that's been working back, and it's a product that, where we're using scrubbers, as you know, the scrubber technology here in Hyperion, this actually goes into the water before it goes into the plant and supposedly eliminates odor, so we'll be following up on that. AQMD did receive about 64 odor complaints in the last month, and particularly, they were investigating a fence line spike during a power outage that they had. And that power outage took place on January 8th, around 3 o'clock, facility utilized emergency power backup, and then on Saturday, January 11th, facility was rebooted and back online with full power, so it was a power outage and that may have caused the uptick in the fence line monitoring. Finally, I also spoke with Barbara Romero, as she knows, the general manager of sanitation, and unfortunately, their first, they were unable to identify a viable candidate for the new plant manager position at this time, so they are going to re-fly the position. That's unfortunately where they are with that right now. That concludes my Hyperion report.
Are they going to schedule another public meeting? Or was it AQMD was going to have a town hall? I had a question about that from the public.
I think it's, do you remember Elias, when that meeting was going to be, the follow-up to the last one?
Yeah, I don't know, but I can
Yeah, well, they pushed it out, I'll send out some information on that, I think it was six months from the last meeting.
And I forgot one thing, there's an upcoming meeting about LASSA, where the County Homeless Initiative and a part of what our delegate is advocating, is a methodology by which that Measure A sales tax piece can be used to fund our South Bay Housing Trust.
Yeah.
Which exists, you know, exists, is unfunded, but this could finally be a funding source that might get it off the ground, that is, it is legal, just a matter, it's a policy decision that the Measure A Funding Authority will have to allocate.
Yes, and I will be on a webinar tomorrow with the COG regarding the allocation of Measure A dollars to the South Bay.
Straight at 12 o'clock, see you there. Only took five years to get funds, I think it has been Alan passed that law. Trust the process, trust the process.
That's it for me, thank you.
And with that, at the bustling three-hour mark, 3:14 minutes, we are adjourned.